Good evening and thank all of you for being here tonight. Today is March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. In honor of Women History Month, we're going to ask one of our employees to come up tonight. We wanted to pick out somebody from the staff and we're going to get them involved. Ms. Hamp, if you would, please come on up tonight. Ms. Hamp is also a first lady and she's going to lead us in our prayer tonight. So if you want to kick us off, if you would, do the thought for today and then I call it the meeting to order and then I'll let you pray and lead us in our pledge. And thank you for all that you do, your dedicated service to this community, our county.
Good evening. I thought for today, silence the angry man with love. Silence the ill-natured man with kindness. Silence the miser with generosity and silence the liar with truth, author unknown.
I'm going to officially call this board meeting to order tonight. If you would, lead us in our prayer, please.
May we all bow our heads. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, your words and your support as we begin this BLC meeting. Help us to represent you and our respective districts in the best light, one where people see none of us, Lord, but all of you. Help us to have meaningful, productive discussions for the betterment of our communities and citizens. Lord God, allow us to grow closer together as a true One Newton family and promote the true meaning of community, which is commune and unity. Bless those in attendance and those watching remotely. Guide our thoughts, our tongues, Lord, and our actions as we bring you glory and honor. Bless us with your grace and mercy. Give us your peace that passes all understanding and during this meeting, as we travel home to our loved ones, give us that same peace. We give you all the honor, the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please in our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We wanted to try to get somebody up here, people up here involved who don't get a chance to get involved. So thank you so much, Ms. Hamp. Commissions, I seek a motion that we adopt the agenda, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a substitute motion to amend the agenda and that amendment would be to add the discussion of the splotch dollars for the 2017 and 2023 splotch for District Three. I will ask every meeting until we discuss this project. I also want to update, as there was some information that was stated at last meeting in regards to this not being a District Three project and land was never found. In the beginning of the 2017 splotch project for the youth facility, land was discovered, which was donated by the Board of Education, behind Live Oak Elementary, which is in District Three. The land was not feasible, which is why it was brought back to me in 2021. And so this project also was on the previous website, which I have screenshots, as a District Three project. So I would love for us to discuss, because District Three is a part of Newton County, we are the only district that did not receive any funding from the 2017 splotch. Only two percent went in that district and it was only for the project manager. So are we saying that District Three is not supposed to receive some of their tax dollars from the 2017 splotch? That should be the question to the Board of Commissioners. Also, 2023, we have not received any movement. There were three properties that were presented and the actual committee, the community voted for two of those lands and the third land has not been discovered. As the county attorney that came before us, he stated that that property that you all tried to deny, based on it being a part of a commissioner who was a commissioner thirty years ago, there is no law in the state of Georgia that you cannot purchase land from a previous commissioner. So our community is looking for answers from this board because we have not moved forward with projects in District Three. And that motion is to amend the agenda to discuss the 2017 and 2023 splotch for District Three.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson that we amend the agenda tonight. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion failed. Thank you. Now I seek a... I'm sorry?
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I was asking the clerk to actually place that as number four, the fourth denial from the Board of Commissioners to discuss this project.
All in... All in favor to approve the agenda as stated? Any opposed? Thank you. It passes three-two. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. This opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you could, come at this time, state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Thank you. The next item is the chairman's report. Tonight we have some special guests. Ms. Hughes, are you here tonight? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman Baines. Good evening, everyone. How y'all doing?
Good evening. Thank you so much.
Yes. As we continue to visit local community nonprofit organizations and shed light on the useful resources available in Newton County, tonight you will hear from Dr. Anne Williams, Executive Director of Sisters Overcomers and Christian Unity Ministry. They received fifty thousand dollars in ARPA nonprofit grants. Let's welcome Dr. Williams to the podium.
Thank you.
Five minutes, please.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I need to give my name for the records?
No, ma'am.
No.
So we're now in citizens comments. Ms. Hughes already gave your name and your organization, but you can restate it if you would like.
No, we only have five minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. We're here representing Sisters Overcomers of Georgia, Inc. Choices. Life is left to choice, not by chance. And that's what we try to teach our children that we serve. This is a youth engagement project, including family advocacy. And we advocate for the family. Sisters Choices for Newton, One Newton, has three components. Mentoring boys to manhood and mentoring girls to maturity. And let's not forget the parents. Mentoring parents through monumental change. That's the only way we can see change, is that we start with the parents. Choices with those components is focusing on mental health for youth. We are experiencing a mental health crisis and statistics show that our children during the height of the pandemic were experiencing suicidal tendencies. The parents beating up on the children, the children beating up on each other. And you know that that has gone over to where we are now. There's a lot of crime among our youth. We have the mental health component that will be shared with you tonight shortly by our certified peer specialist. And please excuse me because I'm getting out of breath now. Was just suffering, I'm recovering from COVID pneumonia. And you know that's the worst that you can have, but we're here tonight. Don't count me out. So Ms. Olinda is going to come shortly and tell you about the mental health portion because it seems like every meeting we talk about mental health, but we're not talking about the children and we really need to focus on the children. Ms. Olinda.
Good evening, everyone. Olinda Ricard Hodge. I'm actually a certified peer specialist in mental health, which means I use my own lived experience with mental health challenges to support others. I'm certified by the State of Georgia. I'm also a certified peer specialist parent, which means I support parents who are raising their children because I have similar experience who have mental health and substance use challenges. But as Dr. Anne was mentioning, the CDC did highlight that more than a third of our high school students reported poor mental health during COVID. Forty-four percent reported that they had been feeling hopeless the previous year. More than half experienced emotional abuse from their parents or another adult in the home. Eleven percent experienced physical abuse. So as you see, there has been a great need and I definitely want to commend you for signing on to that bill, that resolution that came across regarding mental health and we thank you for helping us to pilot this program. So part of this program, like Dr. Anne said, is that we focus on providing the mentorship, but one of the most important components is getting those youth screened to see if their behavior was related to mental health issues, connecting them to a licensed therapist and getting them that ongoing counseling. Even though our funding has ended with you, we are continuing this project. We still have two licensed therapists onboard. We are continuing to connect and support the parents as they move forward in supporting their children. So we just really want to thank you for this opportunity.
And I just want to personally say that I really appreciate all of you signing off on us getting that funding. We had not done anything, honestly, since two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, when the pandemic hit. And so this gave us an opportunity to get back in the game. And just because of you and being so special, so I just plead God's blessings over you. This is a booklet that we gave each of the children and it's casing and casing. Yes, we're twins, but I'm still me. And this book, and I'm giving this book to each of you. It is, this young man was murdered in front of one of our team members. This is her son. And they started writing this book just before he was killed. And it's all about his mental health challenges. And you get one, and you get one, and you get one. And we also have something else for the commissioners because we really want to show our gratitude tonight. All right, let's go.
Thank you.
You get one. Stan Ev... Commissioner Mason? Commissioner Baines? And maybe later we can take a picture.
Thank you.
I can't stay to the end, so we'll have to have a picture later.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, yeah. Again, thank you so much, Dr. Anne, for all that you do and all that you have done in the community. We know you've been doing this for a long time. Started out back in Florida and now you in Georgia doing this. And so we're grateful to have you here and thank you for what you're doing in the community.
We have this cup for you, a momentum of our project. And it says Choices 2023, Newton Mentorship. And on the back it has Sisters, Inc., Family Advocate, Emotional Wellness, MBM, MGM, and MPMC.
Thank you so much.
And each of you get it.
Thank you. Ms. Hamp?
Yes, sir, Chairman. The next item we have on the agenda is our presentation by Ms. Gail Slaton, our Martin Luther King Jr., 2024 Award recipients. Ms. Gail?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair and to the rest of the commissioners and everyone who's assembled. It is good to see many of your faces. I'm seeing again as we've been doing this for a few years now. And this was specifically initiated by you, Chairman Baines, taking the time to recognize the annual MLK Award recipients in this forum. So we do appreciate your commitment to the public recognition outside of the annual program. It was particularly helpful during the years when we were in COVID and operating strictly via virtual celebrations. But thankfully, this year we did return to our live event and so we are appreciative of your support. So this year we don't need to present our awards as we did the past few years, but I think you may have your own recognitions. But I will at least provide the introductions of the awardees for this year. Before I proceed and while you're kind of coming around, just a couple more remarks for individuals who may be new to the county. As we know, the county has changed a lot in the thirty-nine years since the annual event, the celebration event started. It was started largely at the impetus and unction of former commissioner, pastor, retired pastor Reverend Harold Cobb, under the leadership of then-chair Erin Varner and other members of the community. It was a civic and community-based partnership. And I also know and I certainly want to address, as I wasn't present at the time that it came up, I think last month or maybe in January, the topic of funding for the Celebration Committee, which is what I chair. And I'm greatly, deeply grateful for the opportunity to serve as chair as I am a beneficiary of a scholarship that was founded by the county to signify its commitment to celebrating the life and legacy of Dr. King, who some of you may know and for those who don't, actually had biological ties to this county through his grandparents. And so we feel an even greater affinity and privilege that we are part of a county that has blood ties to the King family, Dr. King himself having spent time here and in Bethlehem Baptist Church, not far from here, where his roots are specifically in terms of the faith community. And the county established the MLK Scholars Fund. Now initially, it was established specifically and managed by the county. Those funds were held by the county and then turned over to Oxford College. In the first few years, it struggled to secure funding and ultimately the college took it over. In fact, while I am the third recipient of the scholarship, I only received the scholarship in my sophomore year because there weren't sufficient funds to fund a scholarship when I entered my first year and there wasn't an incoming student who was eligible when I was rising, a rising sophomore. So a lot of people aren't aware of that. So monies that may have been held at all by the county were always held by the county until they were turned over to the college, specifically the scholarship fund and no monies directly to the committee for purposes of celebration. But we hope to partner more and still not necessarily have to have money, but serve as the planning committee, perhaps maybe on a basis whereby the county covers those funds directly reimbursed to the county. Now, all that said... Oh, sorry. I don't have more time for that. Okay. So real quick. So our first recipient is, all of our recipients are quite deserving. Deacon Winston Williams is part of the New Hope Baptist Church and our community. If you will come forward while I offer a few more remarks. Deacon Williams, did he not make it? Well, he is always very busy and we are especially honored to recognize Deacon Williams, especially for his commitment to the homeless community, especially as we think that Dr. King was committed to ending poverty. His countless hours in service to the homeless community truly speaks of continuing the dream and he was our 2024 recipient of the MLK I Have a Dream Award. The recipient of our 2024 Trailblazer Award is none other than Mr. Carl Wilkins. And as he comes forward, I also feel especially privileged, though it tells my age, if the thirty-nine years doesn't, to have been a student when he came to our county. And we were all so excited when he came and blazed a trail as an educator, a leader, assistant principal at Cousins Middle School. And we are so grateful to your continued service blazing a trail in the county, Mr. Wilkins. One of our, well, both of our Young Dreamers, I do believe, are present. Our next recipient is one of our Young Dreamer Award recipients for 2024, Victor Kirkland. He is also a member of the New Hope Baptist Church. He excels in the community and truly embodies what we seek to honor and recognize as young individuals excelling and exemplifying Dr. King's dream of pursuing equity for all, especially among his peers. And our last award recipient for 2024 is another Young Dreamer Award recipient who was able to make it. Unfortunately, her name is not listed on the program, but she is able to be here despite her busy soccer schedule, Ms. Aris Sellers. Again, an exceptional student, member of the Grace Community Church. Great. It's Grace, right? Yes. An exceptional student and leader who excels and is one who has made her own dreams come true, establishing programs for youth in the church and abroad. So we are so very honored to recognize all of our 2024 recipients. Thank you all.
And we're so proud of all of our recipients. Thank you guys for what you do in the community. I apologize that we were rushed for time. We had to go directly into the zoning at seven-thirty and you did an excellent job of getting us there. Again, congratulations to all of you and thank you so much for what you do. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you again, Chairman. This evening we have just two petitions. Our first, they're both appeal cases. This is a preliminary plat that was presented to the Planning Commission in January of this year. It was denied by the Planning Commission and this is now the appeal process for it. Case number is APP24-000001. The name of the applicant for the appeal is the original applicant, which is the PGL LLC Company. Representative is Kirk R. Juistool from Smith Gambrell and Russell LLC. The original case number of the preliminary plat is PP23-00006 and again, the applicant is the same PLG LLC Company. The property owner we have is Louis J. Pastorilla and the Yellow River Bluff LLC and the addresses are seven-thirty and seven-forty North Crowell Road. Tax ID is twenty-five-one-zero-four and forty-three-three-six-eight. The proposed use is a mixed use and they're open for residential and a civic use. The existing zoning is DR, which is single and two-family residential district, and R2, single-family residential district. And it's also located in the Almond Overlay in Tiers One and Almond Overlay in Tier Two. And Tier One is a residential overlay and Tier Two is a non-residential mixed-use overlay. It is in the Yellow River watershed. Character areas are the established suburban core and conservation recreation. The proposed density is three-point-four-one dwelling units per acre and it's on twenty-eight-point-one-six acres and they're proposing ninety-six lots or ninety-six townhomes. And this is located in Commissioner District Three. And again, the appeal request is to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to deny the preliminary plat, PP23-00006, for the towns of the Yellow River. And again, the original request that went to the Planning Commission was to present the preliminary plat for the same development at seven-thirty and seven-forty North Crowell Road. And on the history, again, we have January twenty-third, 2024, the Planning Commission denied the preliminary plat. At that meeting, there was no one in opposition. However, the Planning Commission members expressed concern with potential additional traffic that this subdivision could bring. And these are the character areas. I will read through them, but they are in your packets. But it's just to highlight that the established suburban core supports the multifamily, which will be the townhome zonings as well as mixed use and the conservation recreation would support their civic use, which would be a trail, which they're actually tying into the yellow trail system that the county is working on. So preliminary plat analysis, it is the role of the Planning Commission to review the plat for compliance for Section 450, which is the Almond Overlay and Section fourteen-fifteen-zero-three-zero in the Unified Development Ordinance, which covers the requirements for preliminary plat approval. In reviewing the plat, while staff has not identified any substantial, potential adverse effects that would affect the neighboring properties, transportation networks or citizens, there will be increase in traffic due to new homes being added. These should be minimized with staff's recommended conditions. And the county is working on improvements to Crowell Road, Harold Dobbs Road, as well as Access Road, which would be immediately in the vicinity of this proposed development. So the mixed-use development plat, it was reviewed by our Transportation Department, Fire Marshal, Planning and Zoning, and Stormwater Manager for compliance. Water Authority issued approval for the location of the development. The proposed plat shows a disturbed area of thirteen acres out of the twenty-eight-point-one-six acres. There will be a total of ninety-six townhomes and a civic trail that ties into the Yellow River Trail System. The proposed minimum house size is eleven hundred square feet. And the subdivision, it will have a left turn lane, a decelerating and two entrances. And approximately fifty-six percent of the development will be open space within the floodplain area, which will remain conserved. And the trails with minimum disturbance will be located in this area. The proposed mixed-use development is within proximity to other residential developments and the high school. The existing land uses and zonings in the immediate surrounding area are compatible and the development remains in line with the vision of the comprehensive plan. It lies within the established suburban core and the conservation recreation character areas. Staff is of the opinion that the proposed preliminary plat, which lies in the Almond Overlay, Tiers One and Two, meets the requirements for the Unified Development Ordinance. If the preliminary plat is approved, it is conceptual in nature until the final plat is approved. And these are comments from the Planning Commission meeting. Again, they expressed concern that the townhomes could be rentals and of course, a concern at any additional traffic, you know, that would be in the area. They also inquired for traffic study had been completed and how soon the development would commence. So this particular development did not meet the requirements for a traffic study. They would have to have a hundred units or more. And the applicant, Ms. Jane Myers, in her correspondence with the Planning Commission, she indicated that when the developer does move in, they would be handling the sale of the homes, the finished townhomes, to buyers. And she also added that, you know, they hadn't done the traffic study since it was not required by the ordinance. And there were no objections at the Planning Commission meeting. And there were no objections at the Planning Commission meeting from residents. So, the recommended conditions. The proposed preliminary plat has been reviewed by staff and meets the zoning and subdivision requirements pertaining to design and layout. In reviewing items per Division fourteen fifteen of the Newton County Development Regulations and Division four fifty of Newton County Zoning Ordinance, staff recommends approval of the plat and elevation subject to the following conditions. Prior to obtaining a land disturbance permit, all comments from the Newton County Fire Marshal Development Services Department and the Transportation Department shall be addressed. Prior to obtaining a land disturbance permit, all comments from external agencies, such as the Water Authority, GDOT, and GSWCC, as applicable, shall be addressed. The plat will have two entrances, and it will include left-turn lanes and decel lanes as approved, you know, by the Transportation Department. The trail system shall be open to the public and have benches or seating areas along the trail. The walk-in trail shall connect with the Yellow River Trails System. The mixed-use development shall conform to all applicable requirements of the Almond Overlay, and the civic area will remain privately owned but available to the public. And this is the aerial view of the parcel. It's going to be actually these two parcels. There's currently a duplex on the larger parcel, and there's a single-family home located on this one. Of course, you have the Yellow River running behind here. And so, the trail system is going to be incorporated along this area here. These are current zonings, DR, which is for duplexes, single and two-family homes. And of course, you have R-two, single-family residential. It is in the Almond Overlay Tier Two, which is a non-residential mixed-use tier. And of course, the Tier One, the residential tier. This is the floodplain map, so the areas in green indicate where the floodplain is. So, they are not proposing to build any of the homes in there, but the trail system is allowed to be in that area with minimal disturbance. And of course, areas in blue are wetlands. This is the plat that was presented, so we have the townhomes and the layout. So, we have at least, yeah, we have a couple of entrances here. And this is onto Crowell Road here. Of course, you've got the Yellow River in the rear. The dotted line is the floodplain line, so none of the building is occurring within there. And this is just a color rendering of what the plat would look like or the development. And there are no other questions? Or is there no questions to staff? This is a public hearing, Chairman, and the applicant is here.
Thank you so much, Ms. Applewhite. We're going to open it up now for our public hearing. The applicant and those in favor, you have ten minutes to come tonight. Please state your name and address for the record, please. You have ten minutes to come tonight. Applicant and those that are in favor tonight.
Ready to go. Members of the Board of Commission, thank you for allowing us to come. My name is Kirk Felstool, and I am at eleven oh five West Peachtree Street in Atlanta. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I've got Jane Blair with me and some of her team along with us. The, this is an appeal of the denial of a preliminary plat by the Planning Commission, and the staff has recommended approval twice. We're respectfully requesting a reversal of the Planning Commission decision because we've met the requirements of the plating process. This is not like a rezoning or a variance process where there's a lot of discretion vested. This is a technical process, the plating process. We'll talk a little bit about that, where what we are required to do is comply with the ordinance. That's what the staff is reviewing for, and that's what we think that we've done. The development is the towns at Yellow River. As Sheena has said, it's ninety-six developments at seven thirty and seven forty Crowell Road, and it's in the Almond Crowell, it's in the Crowell Road Overlay District. And so, the property is already zoned and entitled. It's, this is actually a pretty small development compared to what the Overlay District would allow, and some of the restrictions that you've seen and the requirements for mixed use. This property could be developed at seven units per acre, but it's only being developed at three and a half units per acre. So, there are, out of twenty-eight acres, there's about sixteen acres that are not being developed. The, I think it's also important to recognize that the owner, as part of one of the road projects along Crowell Road, has contributed right-of-way. And as part of that, there was an agreement with the county to have the two access points, basically the two that are reflected on the site plan, one full access and one right in, right out. So, what I want to take a little bit of time to do is talk about the plating process because I think we're more used to the zoning and the variance-type processes where there's a lot of discretion. This is an exercise in compliance with your regulations. It is not, let's see. It is stuck. Oh, there we go. Got it. The first thing that's, and this is discussion that comes out of your regulations. This, the preliminary plating process is a step in the development process, not in the zoning process or the variance process. There, we're at a preliminary plat phase where the property is already entitled. Then there'll be a land development permit, and then finally, a final permit. The purpose of the plating process is really by state law. It is a process of identifying what the boundaries are going to be for purposes of when you get to the final plating process, to be able to subdivide the property, subdivide lots and sell them. That is the purpose of it. Your ordinance or your development regulations appropriately have layered in a requirement for compliance with local ordinances. And so, that is what the role of the plating process is. But there are limits to it. If you look at what the developer's requirement is, it is to submit to the director a preliminary plat that is developed and prepared in accordance with the regulations. It is for the purpose of compliance. Similarly, once we give it to the department head, there's a requirement that the staff review the plat for conformance with regulations. Again, it is a conformance and a compliance exercise. And that's what we did. Once the, I want to take you a little bit through the timeline of what happened, which is typical in a plating process. We submitted a preliminary plat in September of 2023. The staff did its first review in October, sent us comments, which we turned around in, on October sixteenth. November seventh, the staff gave us a second set of comments, and this is all in the record that we submitted to you, gave us a second set of comments. And then, after we got those comments, we submitted a, another version of the plat, which the staff marked, and you saw that in the presentation by Sheena, and it's in the record. The staff signed off that we were in compliance. Then it goes to the Planning Commission, but before the Planning Commission meeting, the staff issued a report, and their conclusion was that there's compliance with the regulations. So, at the Planning Commission hearing, there was no other evidence that was submitted. The staff, the Planning Commission raised a comment about traffic, but only raised a comment about it. There was no evidence in the record. And certainly, any development is going to cause traffic. But this development is so small by your standards, that a traffic study is not even required. So, we filed our appeal to the Board of Commissioners, and the staff issued a second report, and you heard that. And the results were the same, where the recommendation or the conclusion of the staff is that we have complied with the regulations. The last thing that I want to show you is this issue about the tra- just so we're understanding, the only time that your regulations require us to prepare a traffic study would be if it was one of those DRIs, a development that was big enough to be a DRI, or if there are three hundred units. And ours is ninety-six. And so, we fall way below that. The first time anybody ever mentioned a traffic study was one of the comments from the Planning, or from the Planning Commission. The staff never raised it because it's not required. So, you know, I'll reserve any remaining time, but I just want to make sure everybody understands that this is a process of compliance. It is not a process of, like we're used to in zoning or a variance procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to, would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? We're going to reserve it at two minutes and thirty-four seconds. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. If you would like to oppose tonight, you may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please, if you would like to oppose tonight.
My name is Dave Norton, four three five seven, Highway one forty-two in Newborn. I'm also the founder of saveeastnewton.org. And I realize this is just an appeal, so I just want to say that the citizens of East Newton stand with the residents in District Three and District Two as far as the high-density housing that everyone wants to put in. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak and oppose, please, tonight? Anyone else would like to oppose tonight?
Sandra Bates, thirty, Stream Glen Court. I am the president of the HOA for Silver Ridge Farms, and I am very disgusted with all the building that's going around our neighborhood, and especially in District Three. Trying to hold my composure because I'm pretty pissed right now. The first thing, I'm going to start back when it comes to the apartment complex. They have already sold, and I said that before. They're going to keep selling. We're getting ninety-six lots with a single family. Is it going to be single family with some townhouses? We already have that going on on the backside of our subdivision. It took me, I came home from work. I worked at the cab and doing planning and sustainability for thirty-five years. It took me almost an hour to get from Brown Bridge to my house on Harold Dobbs. Traffic study needs to be done. We are way over the limit. Schools overcrowded, the police, I don't know how many code officers we have because if we keep, when this population keeps growing, problem's going to come, okay? We need to worry about schools, fire, county services. We need to be, oh, and we was not notified about any zoning that was going on or new things that's coming in. And I thought that was part of the planning, that they were supposed to notify the people in a certain radius. We're not getting those notices, okay? I'm a taxpaying citizen. I got two properties here in Newton County. I expect, as a board, for you to come to our needs. We, y'all owe us that. But all these developers coming here, he talking about traffic study? Do he know that it takes us, for me to get out my subdivision, to get to I-20, about fifteen to twenty minutes every morning or longer? We need to put a moratorium or something on this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to oppose tonight?
Good greetings, Commissioners. My name is Tercia Hodge. I've been a Newton County resident for the last fifteen years. I live in District Three. The traffic study needs to be done. I have witnessed one too many accidents in front of me. One day, driving with my senior mom and my artistic sister in the backseat, our car backed the corner on Harold Dobbs, and it startled us. Let me tell you, if he had hit us, I would not be here standing today. I'm asking you guys to please deny this development. We have rentals that will lower our property values. These kids need recreation. I have kids driving up and down with their scooters on my driveway. Unbeknownst to me, with their bikes and their scooters. We need something. We need help. And we just asking you guys, please, please, let the infrastructure improve, get the recreation for the kids, and deny these crazy developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Charlene Bridges. I'm in Cold Springs and Saddle Brook, and I'm fairly new to Newton County. And what I've experienced in District Three, yes, the traffic study needs to be done. It is absolutely, I'm looking at the map. I first moved here. District Three, development? No traffic study? There is no way. I just wrote this. I have amazing neighbors, amazing neighbors. I'm blessed to have friends all around each two, three, five, all these districts that are here. I have friends. I have my nieces, my nephews, my grandkids. When I found out there are no resources for parks and recreation, I'm like, what is that? Both, all my children have benefited from the STEM Academy and also the Career Academy. When I tell you the inspiration I get from these young people is amazing. Can y'all tap into that? Please tap into that. The map, don't lie. The map does not lie. This is coming from my family, my family. When I got to my neighborhood, I had meals, and I had a welcome note, and like, this is Newton County. But when I turned around, it was spring break, and it was their fall break, and they had no place to go. But you want to put homes everywhere. If you look at District Three and take an aerial map of all the homes that they have there, you see no green space, no green space whatsoever. I'm asking to be open. All council people, please be open to what we need. I speak for so many amazing young people. Can you take my hand and walk down some of these, and drive down some of these roads? You're stuck in traffic. If something happens, as far as the emergency happens, on any of these roads, it's devastating. It is absolutely devastating. I just, one more thing to say, and I'm not that person. Let's band together for our children, our future leaders, because they inspire me every day. Let them inspire you. Come to my house. I cook really well. I'm totally inspired by the innovative thinking and the outlook of their future. Everyone here may have an opinion, left or right or whatever. That's fine. Let's work together. The distance between, the distance between some of these counties, two, three, five, whatever, is maybe twenty minutes. Maybe, maybe. Board meeting starts with an invocation, the act of, the process of asking for help or support, a prayer for blessing for guidance. We need guidance. We need help. It's always a joke in our family. We say, don't move to Georgia. We're full. District Three is full. We're full. We're absolutely full. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I want to talk about District Three again. Mr. Elworth, Mr. Mason, Mr. Cowan. You guys always bulldoze the people in District Three. So, the residents of Newton County, you need to know that Mr. Elworth, Mr. Mason, Mr. Cowan, they are against the citizen, even though they get paid by taxpayer dollars to work with District Three, but they work against them every time. Newton County, you need to hold these three guys accountable when it comes down to voting this year because they're working against the resident who pays their salary. So, I call these guys the foxes because anytime you leave foxes in the hen house, you know what's going to happen. They're going to have a chicken dinner. So, as long as you giving them gifts, they happy. You ought to seen the smile on Mr. Mason's face, Mr. Elworth. Everybody celebrate, accolades. But when it comes down to helping the residents, some of these residents in District Three can't remember the last time they had their street paved. Paved, but I guarantee you, Mr. Elworth, Mr. Mason, Mr. Cowan will vote against it because you helping somebody in the third district. helping somebody in the third district. Okay? So, third district, look at these people up here. They don't care anything about you unless you padding their pockets with some green stuff. So that goes to tell you how much they care about District Three. They don't care anything about, just tonight, they voted again against District Three. Why is that? Why is that, Newton County? They got their own agenda. Newton County, May is election time. We need to hold these three guys accountable, because they're up to no good. They bringing corruption within this district.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is, on YouTube. Jackson.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
My name is Carla Daniels Hooper. I'm also a resident of District Three, been there twenty-plus years. I agree that we've got to do something about the growth, but one of the things we have to do is to make sure we have a plan to get ahead of what the developers are doing. We have to understand that there are ordinance in place that allow them to present a plan that says that it will be residential, but they can change it, and it would then be rental. Until we put a plan in place to get ahead of the developers, we will always have to come behind them. The second point I want to make is, there's always a red flag, in my opinion, if a developer refuses to do a traffic study, even if it's not required. If they have-
Hold, hold on for a minute.
If they have our-
Hold, hold on for a quick second. Hey, um, guys, listen, we don't, this is a public meeting. We don't do outbursts. Please refrain from doing, refrain from doing outbursts, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
If they really have the citizens' hearts in front of them, we just ask that they go ahead and do the traffic study, even if it's not required. But it's also one of the things we need to get ahead of and make sure those requirements are in place. I do appreciate the passion of everyone, but I also want to make sure that we understand that we cannot ask for the support of the commissioners, but also tear them down at the same time. And we just can't do that. I also have children that graduated from Newton High School. I'm also invested. But we can't come here and tear down, but also ask for help. I, i- it's just a fact. I appreciate what everyone is trying to do here, but again, without a plan, we will always come behind the developers and try to get these things denied. So make sure that we can come together and put some things in place so that they cannot develop, because ordinances are already there that prohibits these things. Thank you.
Thank you much. We have seven seconds. Anyone else want to go? Seven seconds, seven seconds. If not, we're going to revert back, um, to you, sir. He has two minutes. Yep.
Thank you, and I appreciate, I appreciate all the comments. I, I do think it is important to come back to the notion, though, that we, we are not at a phase of discretion. This is a phase of compliance with the, we're in the development phase where there are requirements for compliance. There are provisions, there are regulations and ordinances that you adopted. We're trying to follow them. That's all we're trying to do. And your staff is trying to follow them. That's all they're trying to do. And they recommend, they concluded that we are complying with the ordinance. This section that we are zoned in, this overlay district, specifically calls for higher-density development. That's a choice that the county makes, not us. And we are developing this on, at half the density that is, that we could develop it at, half. It could be developed at seven units per acre. We're doing it at three and a half units per acre. And I do think there's an appropriate discussion that takes place amongst the, the citizens, and that is that there is a critical need for green space and civic space, which is what half of this development is, um, is dedicated to. We have a letter of intent with the county to extend the, the Yellow River Trail, which, and, and grant permanent easements. There's a letter of intent that's, that's been signed. And we didn't, we don't have to do that, but it is important to do that for this community, because that project is important to you. And, uh, and, and so, I just, I just, all we are doing is following the regulations that you adopted, whether it's density or compliance issues. Uh, and, and just so, you know, just so we're kind of clear on the record, that, that oversized book that I gave you, which, I'm sorry, it was so thick, but it has your, a certified copy of your ordinance, along with, uh, the six exhibits we meant, we want to make sure are included in the record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Got thirty-three seconds. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Thank you, our public hearing is closed. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up. This is District Three Commissioner Sanders. Need a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I, I, I do the motion, I have a couple of questions. Um, just to expound on the ordinance, um, as Ms. Hooper Daniels came up and stated, that's one of the things I have actually requested since I've been in office, that we need to look at our ordinances. And if you were here at the six P M. meeting, our direct development, the service director said they putting an RFP out for our county to look at all ordinances in Newton County. So until that's done, we're here at this situation. Um, a lot of these homes were put in place before I even stepped into this position in twenty-twenty-one. Unfortunately, there was no plan when homes were approved. There was no plan put in place for infrastructure. All we were doing is just approving houses. And we didn't look at the, the, the traffic, we didn't look at law enforcement, we didn't look at schools, which are currently overcrowded. When, in twenty-twenty-two, there was a statement made that Newton High is almost overcrowded and almost near to capacity. I've spoke with the principals at Live Oak Elementary, they're at capacity. That's all in that area and vicinity. So the issue is, is that we didn't plan, and I'm saying we, even though I wasn't even on this board, I've only been on this board three and a half years, these houses were built and approved before I even sat here. And so that was an issue with the previous board, but now we're here. And so my question to Ms. Director Applewhite, Harold Dobbs is about to build a subdivision. Am I correct in that area?
That is correct.
How many homes is on that road?
Um, approximately on the road?
Well, I mean, how many homes going to be in that area?
In the subdivision?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it's approximately three hundred and eighteen?
Three hundred and eighteen.
Just over three hundred units.
Okay.
Um, single family and townhomes.
Okay, so behind Silver Ridge is a subdivision that was told to us that was going to be purchased, and all of a sudden now it's going to be rental. How many homes is behind Silver Ridge? That's, that's coming, that's right next to it.
You mean next to where the apartments went up?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I think they are at about seventy-plus homes?
Okay. And then they're also building an addition across the street by Fair Cliff, and that's how many homes?
I don't recall the exact number, but-
About seventy or eighty, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And also, the former Commissioner Schultz property, which is annexed to Port Adele, that was approved for almost six hundred apartment units, as well as, I think, about five hundred homes, am I correct? Because I went to that, the actual planning meeting. And then now we have the apartment complexes, how many units?
I don't have the exact number.
About six hundred units. It's about six hundred units. So I, I did that for you all to hear these numbers. I wanted you to hear these numbers. That's all in the same area. When the previous board voted to put houses in that one, they call it the box, all the residents that live in District Three, that area, they call it the square of the box. So when the commissioners came and started approving houses, approving houses, approving houses, they didn't think, oh, each house might have three or four people in it. Each subdivision, the, the capacity, if you look at statistics, every house has about three to four people in the home. So that's, uh, uh, three hundred houses times three. That's where the traffic comes from. That's seventy plus eighty houses, it's almost a hundred and fifty houses times three. Six hundred apartment units, probably two people in that house times two. And then also you have the entire subdivision that's supposed to be built, that's annexed to Port Adele, which is the former Commissioner Schultz, um, property. That's supposed to be five hundred houses and so forth. Not also including the houses that are behind Kroger, that's still being built, that's also coming up to do another, um, complex. They want to do townhomes. So this is where we're coming, this is where we at. And so this is why I asked that question, because law enforcement hasn't been included in this conversation. Fire, we don't have a fire station in that area. The fire chief even called me and asked about placing one in the area, because there's a lack of fire. We had houses burned to the crisp, one in my subdivision, one next door in the subdivision, the subdivision over, because fire service could not get to it in an, in an amount of time. And they burned down. I watched the one on my street burn to the ground, because it was a one-way-in, one-way-out subdivision, which we need to be getting back to commissioners, because we supposed to be working on that. That house burned down to the ground, because the fire station could not, the fire department could not get to the house. That is a problem. Also EMS is a problem, also in my subdivision area, that's all in that crawl row area, we had a person die, because EMS could not get to them in time, because we don't have our own EMS service, because we don't own our nine-one-one certificate. So these are all the issues that we're having, and it's not coming down developer to developer is in service to do their job and their business. But these are the problems. Traffic, schools, law enforcement. Why are we packing all of these people in one area like we're sardines? I live on that street. So the thing about being in local office, when you are a commissioner in a local office, is that you're voting on things where you live. I see my neighbors, I don't call them constituents, I call them my neighbors, because I see you in the grocery store, I see you in Walmart. So anytime that I vote on something, I'm voting where I live as well. So that is an issue, that is a problem, commissioners. It was an issue and a problem when the previous board did it, because they didn't think about it, but a lot of people who actually voted, when I saw who voted on these properties, did not even live in the area. But fault on the previous commissioner, I will say it, fault on the previous commissioner for allowing all this activity to happen, and she didn't even live on that side of town. Fault on the previous commissioner to allow that to happen. And so my motion will be to deny the Appeal A P P two-four dash zero 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 one.
It's been a motion, uh, by Commissioner Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Commissioner, it's been second by Commissioner, um, Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C. Uh, there's one other thing, Commissioner, I, I want to also add. It's about our water capacity. And it is projected by the year twenty-thirty, some said twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-five, twenty-four, we will be at capacity. And some of the ideas, and in case most people didn't know this, been floated around, is you want to take the sewage water, treat it, and put it back into the water system. Man, I ain't never heard nothing like that before. And we are faced with a whole lot of issues. And, um, a whole lot of issues. And so, um, you know, I, I, I think it's just, it's just, what they say, a bomb waiting to go off, that we're not addressing. And so I hope it's some bird that we address all these.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Stand denied. Ms. Applewhite.
Yes, sir. Um, our second evening, this, our second petition this evening is also an appeal to a preliminary plat that was denied. Um, it is A P P twenty-four dash zero 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 two. Staff is, however, requesting that, um, it be tabled at this time to allow more information to be gathered for the traffic study. And this is the, this is located in District Two.
Oh.
The Grand Reserve at Covington.
Staff is asking-
I'm sorry?
You said asking that it be tabled? What'd you say?
Yes, we are requesting, um, staff is requesting it be tabled-
Okay.
-to gather more information. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to make a motion, um, that, um, we follow staff's, uh, recommendation on the Appeal A P P two-four dash zero 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 two, as stated by our Director of Development Services.
Thank you, sir. It's been a motion made by Commissioner Mason that we table. Is there a second?
Chairman, one more thing, I'm so sorry. Can we put a date on that? It will be two months, sixty days out?
Commissioner Mason, can you amend your motion, please?
Yes, if we can, uh, amend that motion, uh, with a sixty-day recommendation, which I believe that will be May twenty-first.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? It's been a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Um, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five to zero, it's stand table.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Hampton, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The next item we have on the agenda, we're returning to number seven, reports from the county manager.
Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, citizens of the community. Uh, before I get into the logistics of my actual county manager's report, I'm going to yield to Ms. Ashley Best, who is our county extension coordinator, uh, with the University of Georgia Extension Services, because today is National Agriculture Day, and she wants to talk to, uh, this board and the citizens about some of the great things that they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. So today is National Agriculture Day, and I wanted to talk to you about what agriculture is in Newton County and what it looks like. We are still very relevant, and we have a large presence here in Newton County. Um, our county farm gate value, and what that means is it is the cost of farm products coming directly from the farms in Newton County is, um, seventy-point-eight million dollars. So that equates to over three hundred and one million dollars in economic outputs, including marketing, um, transportation, all of that stuff. So our top commodities currently are horses, beef cattle, as well as ornamentals. And with the beef cattle, um, section, forages and hay production go in there as well. Newton County has beautiful hay fields all across, you know, both sides, the west side and the east side, so we're really proud to have high-quality forages produced right here in Newton County. So a little bit about extension, what I do is I take the science of everyday living and translate it for homeowners, farmers, communities to foster a healthy and prosperous Georgia. So my job is to be an extension of the University of Georgia and serve Newton County and Newton County citizens. My favorite part is building relationships, and if you, you know, if citizens don't know me, I hope to get to know that, to get to know you, and develop programs and presentations that help you diagnose and, and solve the problems that you have in your home, in your agricultural entity or production. And I do that through site visits, consultations, phone calls, emails, all of the above. So in twenty-twenty-three, just to recap, I did seventy-six different site visits that resulted in sixty-eight different diagnostic samples, with over fourteen-hundred face-to-face contacts within those seventy-six site visits. Um, you can see I do producer site visits as well as homeowner site visits and, um, trying to make a difference in their management techniques. Twenty-twenty-three programming, I did thirteen adult programs focusing on elevated equine programming, um, organic fruit and vegetable production, as well as my best practices series, which is a homeowner-based interest fun-type agricultural presentation. I did two youth programs, the, both of those were hosted at the Newton County Agriculture Center. One is an equine showmanship clinic, and it was open to state four-H and FFA members, and we had over thirty-six participants there from across the state. Eleven invited presentations, and, um, what I'm really proud of, is I did three national and international presentations. I was invited to speak at the International Grasslands Congress, I spoke at the Equine Science Symposium on virtual equine programming, and I presented a poster at the National Association of County Ag Agents in Iowa this past year. Twenty-twenty-three was really busy. I had, um, over two thousand contact, face-to-face contacts, eight hundred phone contacts, six hundred emails, which some of those numbers are not represented up there. I've probably missed an email here or there documenting it. Um, but I did have fifty-six hundred indirect contacts. So that's people seeing me at a booth, seeing me at an event, table, things like that, uh, Farm Day or Ag Day, you know, on the square, all of those things. Topics include or, um, ornamentals, turf grass, forages, home gardens, equine management, all those things. I'm not going to read this to you, but I do want to point out- I'm not going to read this to you, but I do want to point out that I do have a regional reputation now for my equine expertise. I also have developed a website. It's the elevatedequine.u ga.edu. Me, along with a team of three other agents, we provide this resource. It's a statewide equine resource. It's actually very aesthetically pleasing. You should check it out. And we, that's where we host our national award-winning newsletter, The Leading Rain. And I'm also working on a podcast, so super excited about that. Because we are close to the horse park, and we have a lot of awesome shows at the Newton County Ag Center, I'm hoping to do an equine podcast. Last year in twenty twenty-three, we had a state winning horse judging team from Newton County with Newton County four-Hers that I coached and helped in that success. And I am doing all kinds of horse stuff across the state with FFA as well as, you know, Athens Area Horse Community, just making sure that I solidify that regional reputation. Because it comes easy to me. Horses are my passion. I have horses. I grew up with horses. Something that did not come easy to me is organic fruit and vegetable production programming. That is a need that was developed and that I identified here in Newton County. We have a lot of organic farms because of our close proximity to Atlanta. It is a, it's a high-value, you know, product, and it's definitely something that is needed in our community. And we have an on-farm research project currently ongoing at Love is Love in Mansfield, Georgia. I'm working with two specialists from the University of Georgia to help conduct that on-farm research project. And I basically ask my farmers what they want, like what do you want for programming? And they're like, I need something on soil fertility. I need something on weed management. And I make that happen. So we do have a tomato grafting workshop actually tomorrow. And in July, I have a farmer field day, and then in the fall, we will do a research update day. So I'm hoping to bring back the statewide organics team and have that funded at the university level. That is one of my goals. And just keep putting Newton County on the map in the organic fruit and vegetable production realm. Other activities, one that I'm really proud of is the Newton County Ag Center Committee member. If you have not been down to the Ag Center, you should definitely check it out. Our rodeo's coming up. It's going to be September twentieth and twenty-first, so we are super happy about that. I also saved the community six thousand dollars in partnering with the Young Farmers Program. We hosted a fruit tree sale. We did not make any money off of this, but we were able to gather enough orders to have a wholesale order. We went down there, picked it up, saved the community members roughly six thousand dollars. So I hope that you guys continue to support me, to support my program, and think about agriculture every day, because without agriculture, you would be naked and hungry and without a home. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will now transition into my county manager's report. The three Ps in the day, we're going to focus on processes. Our voices was heard at the presidential primary election. It was conducted statewide on Tuesday, May twelfth. Over nine thousand Newton County citizens exercised their right to vote. When you drill down the voting totals, we had three hundred and sixty-two absentee ballots. In-person advance voting or early voting was three thousand eight hundred and four citizens. And the election day voting was at four thousand nine hundred and two. And that was a total of nine thousand eighty-six voices heard in this great county. As we transition from the presidential primary, it is now for our, time for our voices to be heard at the local and state level. The general election will take place, as many of you know, Tuesday, May twenty-first. The early voting calendar will be released soon. And March fourth was the earliest day to request an absentee ballot for the primary in May, with the first day absentee ballots to be mailed on April twenty-second. We're going to shift gears. December fifth, I brought to this board an opportunity for us to standardize lease agreements as we know it in terms of our facilities. I want to revisit that this evening and kind of give you a snapshot of what we discussed and where we are and where I hope we're able to go after this presentation. This is an overview of the properties. County-owned, currently unoccupied, Gum Creek, Nelson Heights Community Center. Counties that are owned and operated under a lease agreement right now, Washington Street and portions of Cousins Center. Those county-owned, currently operated without a lease agreement is the TK Adams Historic Band Room and portions of Cousins Center. And then we have an IGA with Mansfield Community Center. The vision moving forward is to standardize lease agreements, and that's our aim. As I stated before, I brought this to the board December fifth. Subsequently, I provided them a copy of the proposed lease agreement as well as the policy associated with that, that myself and Gerard and Davis created. So the general terms are as follows. The county will not seek to collect rental payments in exchange for five-on-one C-three operators in community centers providing public programs and services to residents of Newton County. When entering into the lease agreement, program operators will be required to disclose comprehensive programming, offerings and services that will be provided to the citizens of the community. No organization operating under lease agreements will have the authority to sublease to a third party. Responsibilities of the county outlined here. Major repairs and replacements of the roof, foundation, structural elements and exterior walls of the buildings on the property. Maintenance of the underground utility and sewer pipes outside of the exterior walls of the buildings on the property. And replacement of worn-out or irreplaceable mechanical and electrical systems. The responsibilities of the Lease C in this proposed agreement are as follows. Lease C shall outline programs that benefit all residents and execute said programs. Lease C shall maintain the property by keeping a good state of cleanliness, maintenance and repair. Lease C shall pay utility costs, groundskeeping and pest control. And also maintain commercial general liability coverage and commercial automobile liability insurance. Now, as I stated before, I sent this document to this board, and I received some feedback from Commissioner Sanders on January sixteenth. I sent it out on the twelfth. And some of the relevant issues that she raised are as follows. Her primary point of contention was in relationship to the operating costs. And the lease agreement currently states that the costs for improvements be paid for by the Lease C. It's been recommended that these costs be assumed by the Lease Sir rather than the Lease C. As typically, five-on-one C-threes may not have the budget for these type of large-scale expenses. Again, this document was vetted again by Gerard and Davis, but these were the recommendations. Moving forward. If we can come to a consensus tonight as a board, and if there are revisions needed, my office will make said revisions. But I would like the board to grant me permission, as the county manager, to begin meeting with current tenants to get them prepared that we will execute a lease agreement as approved by the board. One of the key pieces of this is that we look to have these lease agreements in place no later than the start of the FY twenty-five fiscal year. I yield back my time. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much, Mr. County Manager. I would like to see the updated version, because that was more than that. Those are a few things that I had an issue with. Actually, what you just stated, I had sent the email back and said, never mind, because I see it in the lease agreement. But I had questions in regards to there was a verbiage in there that if they happened to rent the building to someone for an hour or whatever, so that the money has to be turned into the county. And I had a question in regards to that, because if that person is, happened to have a party or somebody's having an event at that facility and they're renting that property, renting it out for that, not a third-party lease, but renting it out, if the money's been turned into the county, they're possibly using those funds to upkeep what's happening, the utilities or whatever's in that building. So my question was, how are they going to have access to those funds when they are the ones who marketed those people to utilize the building? So that was one of the questions I had. So that's why I said I would like to see the updated version, because it was a whole list of things that was in there.
We haven't made any revisions, and quite frankly, you know, in all due respect, some of those recommended revisions, I vetted with Gerard and Davis, and we felt that maybe they were not as substantive as needed. And the two relevant points were the points I identified during this presentation.
Well, is, how is, what's the structure? What's the standard operating procedure if those funds are turned into the county? And they're going to be, want to utilize that for upkeep? Is the county keeping the funding if they happen to use the building? Because it's stating in the contract that they have to turn that funding into the county. So that was my question, is once it's turned into the county, will that nonprofit or whomever is renting that building have access to those funds to utilize those funds either for upkeep or whatever they need for that building? So there was no actually standard operating procedure listed inside that lease on what's going to happen with the funds.
Standard operating procedures are just that. And they're, the sole oversight is with the people who oversee the operations.
No, I don't think, I don't think you're understanding me.
No, I do understand you.
Oh.
And what I'm sharing with you is this. You made recommendations. We vetted those recommendations. We felt that those two recommendations were the most valid. And we being Gerard and Davis and myself.
Okay, so you actually are not understanding me.
I do understand.
Okay.
I do.
As we stated, when we teach, when two people talking, nobody's listening. So my question is.
Hold on, hold on for a second. So if you're saying he don't understand you, do your question again.
That's what I was doing, Mr. Chair. I was asking what is going to happen to those funds. I wasn't questioning if the county is going to receive the funds. I was asking if the people who are renting the building, or you have in the building with the lease, will have access to those funds once they turn it into the county. For instance, if they're renting the building to, maybe I'm throwing an event, and they're charging me two hundred dollars to rent the building, I'm just throwing a number out there. They have, and based on the contract, the lease, it says those funds have to be turned into the county. So my question was, will they have access to use those funds for something to upkeep the building? Or for utilities? Because if it's a nonprofit and they're responsible for utilities, they're renting the building to be able to raise funds, to be able to take care of the building and the utilities. So my question was, will they have access to the funds? And that's why I said standard operating procedure, what's the procedure of them actually receiving the funds? Or are we saying they won't have access to funds where they actually had individuals rent a building?
When they are providing comprehensive programming, like a five-on-one C-three does, all monies will be reincorporated back into the facility.
Okay, so they can come, that was my question. So will they come to the county? Can that be listed in the agreement, because it's not outlined? When you don't have things listed in agreement, people don't know. That was the only question I was asking. How would they have access to those funds? Now, you stated that to me, but that's not written in the lease.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess to help bring some additional input to this particular conversation, I personally don't believe that any funds should be released to anybody specifically. We have had in the past where funds have been released to that nonprofit, and those funds were misappropriated. Whether those nonprofits want to agree to the misappropriation or not. So this board should not be in the business to releasing funds to the nonprofit. Now, could this board take those funds and help pay for those operating costs directly? Absolutely, that is what should happen, because it is a county-owned facility. And because it is a county-owned facility, I believe that the county should take a level of responsibility when it comes to those operating costs. And so when those funds are given to the county, the county should see where from an operating perspective those funds should be given to those particular companies that are providing that service. Whether it's an electric company, whether it is at a gas company, whether it is a water company, those funds should go directly to those companies and not put into the hands of the nonprofit directly. Because what if something happens with those funds? And the electricity bill is not paid, or the water bill is not paid, or the gas bill is not paid, then that falls back on the county again to have to go and do an additional investigation or audit to try to figure out, well, where are these funds? So we don't want to get ourselves caught up in that type of assistance for our nonprofit organizations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Sanders, and then Commissioner Henderson.
So basically, Commissioner Mason, you just gave me a standard operating procedure. That's what I was asking for. I was asking what was going to be done with those funds. So if you're suggesting that standard operating procedure, then that needs to be outlined in the lease. It's not outlined in the lease. That was my whole point. It's not written. So if that's what the board wants to come in conclusion with, to say if the funds are going into the county and then the nonprofit or whoever in the building submits their bills to the county, and the county paid for it, that's called an SOP. That's what I'm asking for. It's not written.
Commissioner Henderson.
You're in, Commissioner Howard.
It is okay. Well, you know, it, what he was stating has already been told. In fact, at Nelson Heights, that's exactly what the county did. They paid all the bills. That wasn't good enough. They came back and said, well, no, we're not going to pay it. And if you go back and look at the records, and I got them at home, woo, I got a lot of mess on from that. Look at the records. They paid them. They gave me, well, no, we're not going to pay the bills. We don't want to run it this way. Jackie kept the, everybody who gave money for a rental, she kept that. They kept all that. They were what they wanted. And no, you got to assume the responsibility. You got to go get somebody to do your taxes, like Masons, who we still have. And we did exactly what you asked, and then at the end of the day, it still wasn't enough. But what I want to ask, Mr. Cooper, our county manager, is that when you have children in a facility, a county facility, don't care who it is, in the state of Georgia, they got to have a background check. And it's my understanding that the people that you are talking to and which I had asked, and I love to get who they were, but some of them came forward and said this, there's no background check. That's for the security and safety of our kids. You got to do that. Now, regardless of what you may think about me, which I don't care, regardless of what you may think about me, but the fact is that you got to do what's right for our children. And you got to report, you got to report to somebody to make sure that stuff is did right. Who is using for me?
Hold on, hold on. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at eight thirty-nine.
You can't say nothing. You're going to take, I guess you in your feelings.
Commissioner Henderson.
All right. I just had to go to bathroom, that's all. I gotta use the bathroom. All I heard was feet like moving, I was in the bathroom, this is all I heard. It's like, what is going on? God told me to walk out at the right time, thank you, I was glad. I'm like, what mean? I'm so glad I listened to the Holy Spirit.
Hey guys, we're gonna move back. Hey guys, listen, listen. No, we're okay. Guys, we're gonna move back into our regular scheduled meeting. Um, Commissioner Henderson, you wanna finish your comments? You wanna finish your comment?
Uh, yes, indeed, Mr. C. But I'll begin by just by saying this. I've been on this board for, this is my twenty-seventh year. And I think each commissioner or anybody, and a citizen, should be able to make a comment and say something without us getting mad. I have never got mad, no matter what somebody said or did against me, or, or my family. Cause this is where I am. But I think it's a disservice to this board when you can't say what you, what you wanna say, especially as you write. And to finish my comment, what I said was, that when you're dealing with kids, children, our children, any children in the state of Georgia, you have to have a background check. Because there's a whole lot of pedophiles and people who did things and you check, that's why you check their records. And when I was in the business, I checked mine too as well. I led by an example. And I didn't keep things secretive. And what I was talking about from the beginning of my, of my remark, Mr. Cooper was not here. And so only, he got the, he got the latter part of what had been done and what had been said. And so I'm praying for him. I'm praying for us. I pray for all of us. Because you have to have a godly heart just to sit up here. Thank you, Mr. C.
Let me give Mr. Cooper and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Cowan. Go ahead, Mr. Cooper.
I just wanna say for point of clarity, the facility has not been appointed or awarded to anyone. So regardless of conversations that may have occurred with citizens in the community, nothing has been appointed or awarded in terms of a program being, uh, offered at Nelson Heights or an individual as the designated running Nelson Heights. So I, I want us to refrain from the rhetoric and the mendacious propaganda. I just ask that because you said it best, Commissioner Henderson. Let's work together. It's your district. I'm extending my hand to you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Cowan is next. Commissioner Cowan.
Okay, we seem to make things very difficult that are very simple. We're putting together a lease agreement and Commissioner Sanders is correct. The expenses that are paid, that are incurred as a result of leasing the building should be paid by the county. The money should all go to the county, but it should be a reimbursable. If somebody says, hey, your, um, hot water heater blew up while we were there. Okay, it's an expense. They sent it, they notified us and that gets paid. You can put that as, you call it a procedure, it's really a clause in the lease. And I don't think that's a big problem. J.C.'s mentioned that, uh,
Background check.
Background checks. You can put that in a clause in the lease. You just say if, for example, if, um, the, uh, operation of the center is gonna involve supervision of children, background check must be done. You go see that man right over there, Sheriff's Department, he'll take care of it for you. It's not that hard, y'all. Please, let's just try to keep things simple. Life is not complicated. It's actually pretty easy to get along in. County attorney ought to be able to figure that out. If she can't, I'll be glad to do it for you. Cause that's what I do as leases. What else did you have? Is that all you had? What else do you have?
Wait, wait, wait a minute.
Hold on just a second, please. Hold on a second.
Hold, hold, hold on.
I'm just making sure I cover everything.
No, 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 hold on. Let Commissioner Henderson ask what he need to ask. Go ahead and ask what you need to ask.
Did you have anything?
It was just, it was just one other thing. You know, sometime we, we, um, we'll say, say, well, somebody's stealing. Somebody's getting paid. And we never say who it is. But it, but it has sometimes been implied, like you said, it was some nonprofit that was, uh, stealing money. And the only person who was up here, through the art that he practices, that was taking money was myself. And that was not true. And I'll tell you just what I said when I walked down past Commissioner Cowan and stood right out there. I said that if I had been stealing, I wanna go to jail. But if I had been stealing, stop making those remarks behind the horseshoe like somebody been stealing. We know, just by everybody up here, know what people are doing. How the people tell us? Tell it. And so we just stopped making no accusations. Let me just say this, so you know exactly where I'm coming from. It was months when we were talking about this and it said, uh, Thelma Stornali, said because she was on Nelson Heights board, said that she was getting paid. That was a lie. And Commissioner Mason, you said that too, not once but twice. And there was no proof of her being a skin assent. Those kind of accusations that you make towards somebody, it's not true, it's, it's very hurtful. It's hurtful to the people that you're making it to. And me, I've been, tell me, you can say what you wanna say about me. Cause I don't care, cause I know what I'm not doing. And so let's stop, you know, making accusations against folks or implying somebody. If you wanna say somebody's stealing, just say J.C.'s stealing or, or whatever, or whomever. But just stop just making allegations and maybe implying the people.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sanders.
Mine is quick. I did pass by, um, Nelson Heights the other day and I was kinda shocked on what I saw. And I wanted to know who is doing the upkeep and maintenance of the building because the grass was high. It wasn't kept. And then I also wanna know is, how are the youth? Because we just had major holidays, they had spring break and they had nowhere to play. Who, who is allowing these kids to go and use their facility that their parents paid tax dollars for? So as the restroom is shut down, I, I just, I just wanna know what's being done because this is a whole community where these kids can't use a facility that's being paid for by taxpayers' dollars and it's not even being kept. So I just, I just wanna know the answer to that.
We will send, uh, facility maintenance for the upkeep piece. But there will be a grand opening soon and you all will be informed. And we're gonna reach new heights at Nelson Heights. And when you talk about the children playing, if you realize, you know, the weather conditions have not been the best, right? So the first day of spring is today, okay? And I'm gonna be honest and frank with you. We are, are making some revisions there. It's gonna be a holistic approach. And as I stated to Commissioner Henderson earlier, I want you to be a part of it, okay?
Okay. And, and please don't take this the wrong way. I just want you to have an open mind, cause I know everybody's on high right about now. Denny Dobbs Park is open. Give me some parks. Uh, all those other parks are open. They were not closed because of the weather. Every park is open. Kids play in the winter, spring, summer and fall. I did. So closing a park due to the weather, and, and please understand, Mr. Cooper, I'm not coming at you sideways. That is an, that's not excuse. It's not. Because if that's the case, then we need to close every park in Newton County based on the weather. Every park in Newton County need to be closed in the winter. Every park in Newton County need to be closed when it's raining. Every park in Newton County need to be closed when it's iced. Because it's not fair and it's not right. So we need to figure out a maintenance schedule. We need to figure out a operation schedule. I understand you about to do a grand opening for the community center. I'm talking about the playground. I'm talking about the place where the kids can go play, not the community center. That should be open, no matter what. If you're gonna close one park, close them all.
So that was an ask at the beginning and, um, you had that up? You had, you did, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
I too, um, county management reaching my hand out of breath. Keep me informed as to what you're doing. I am still the district commissioner. I mean, it just didn't kick me out, off the board. I'm still there. And I'm supposed to be one of your five people who you supposed to report to the chairman first, but talk to us. Talk to us and let us know what's going on in the community. And I'm gonna say, with Almond, which is in District Four now, uh, my understanding that, um, that it's not our property. Are we still paying the light bill? Are we still letting use our name and still collecting money? So I, I think stuff like that need to be addressed because it gives us the sense of we caring about folks on the other side of town and we ain't caring about folks on this side of town. And we should be. Stop trying to work against us and work with us. And think just how happy we all could be if we truly worked together. And it's just, it's just, you know, sometimes the attitude that we have, and I have, I have, I get in my feeling too, is set them aside and work for the betterment of the community. Now, you said some, some folks, it was a subcommittee that you were doing. And I think one of the people that we talked to, Mr. Greg Shire. And he think he was on it, and I think a couple people's in Green Acres. And the folks came to me, the people in the community came to me, said, J.C., we don't want this happening like this. We want the people in the community. We don't wanna rebrand Nelson Heights. We want it to remain Nelson Heights. And we should be able to run our community center. And I agree with them. I agree with them one hundred percent. In fact, they're giving a petition in the community and throughout, I think, Covington, saying that this is what they want. So I think, I don't think, I can't speak for nobody else. I listen to the people. I listen to the citizens of Newton County. The people who put me in office, I hear them, same as Commissioner Sanders does, hear her community, I hear mine. And that's what they want. And you should be, as our county manager, not working against me, should be working with me to help them.
So let's revert back to the lease. That's what the original question was. In order to do anything with that, you got to amend the agenda to add it to the agenda. So if not, if it's not, there's not a motion to, uh, to amend the agenda to add it to it, we need to move on. He was just asking? Oh, okay, okay, cool. Miss Cooper, you done with your, um?
Yes, I am.
All right, Ms. Henderson.
Mr. Chair, we have no unfinished business to consider. The next item on the agenda is number nine, our consent agenda. Along with that is letter E, the appointment for Splast.
Thank you. We do wanna recognize, um, number nine. Uh, Mr., this is District Five, Mr. Garrett, Garrett Crawford. Um, is he here tonight? As always, we always acknowledge them and make sure that we let them know that we appreciate their service, their willingness to serve. With that being said, Commissioner, I seek a motion, we approve, approve the consent agenda, please. Can I get a second? The motion by Commissioner Mason, second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item on the agenda is item number ten. Ms. Shayna, Shayna Applewhite is going to present Development Services and Purchasing is requesting approval of resolution zero three one nine two four, change order number one.
Ms. Applewhite? Thank you, Chairman. Is this resolution, um, zero three one nine twenty-four? As Ms. Henderson stated, it is a request um, for us to, we're just seeking approval for this per change, um, change in this purchase order for CPL. That is, um, CPL Architects Engineers Landscape Architect and Surveyors Consulting Company. That is currently, they're currently doing all of our, well, not all, most of our reviews of our permits, land disturbance permits, um, commercial building permits, et cetera. And we are asking to change the purchase order from two, two hundred and ten to two hundred and ten thousand, but not to exceed three hundred and forty thousand.
Thank you, guys. I'll seek a motion tonight. Is there a second? The motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Applewhite. So this is gonna create some, some capacity within your department, is that correct? And, and provide some, maybe some relief in terms of volume, is that right?
Yes, they are currently, um, handling most of our residential and commercial reviews right now as well as the MS four program. Which we have to report to the state, yes.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Ms. Henderson?
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is item number eleven. Ms. Brittany White, our finance director, is going to do the February twenty twenty-four financial report.
Good evening. Tonight I will be presenting the February twenty twenty-four financial report. February is our eighth month of our fiscal year, so that puts us around sixty-six percent of the way through our fiscal year. So I'll start with the general fund revenues. For the general fund revenues, to date, we've brought in seventy-seven point three million. So that puts us at eighty, roughly eighty-five percent of our actual to budget. And the, these graphs just show how much we brought in per month and then the actuals to budget for the year. And the, these graphs just show how much we brought in per month and then the actuals to budget for the year. Our general fund expenditures, to date, we've, um, spent fifty-three million, so that puts us at fifty-seven point four percent of our general fund expenditures. And that graph just shows our monthly breakdown and our, our year-to-date to budget amounts as well. So for our general fund totals for the year, at this point, our revenues are over twenty-four million of what our expenditures are. But that will go down through the year because at this point, we've collected a majority of our revenues because pretty much most of the taxes have come in at this point. So our three enterprise funds, we have the water fund. The water fund's revenue to date is six point eight million. Their expenses to date are four point three million. Our solid waste fund, their revenue to date is five point seven million. Their expenses to date are three point six million. And for our Gaethers and Factory Shoals Fund, their revenue to date is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand and their expenses are a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Currently have three active SPOST. The twenty-eleven SPOST has one active project for the historic jail. So there's eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars remaining in that project. We have the two thousand and seventeen SPOST. We still have, um, several ongoing projects here. And we have a total of thirty-three point six million dollars in that two thousand and seventeen SPOST. And our twenty-twenty-three SPOST is our current, um, SPOST that we're collecting on. We currently have a balance of three point two million in that fund. Um, there are several projects that are bonded there, so the active projects going on are being drawn down through bonded funds. And our collections to date, we are at thirteen million and we had projected ten million, so at this point, our projections are two point five million over. And for our impact fee fund, our current balance there is three point four million. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Brittany. Any questions? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank, uh, thank you. Uh, you were saying that the, uh, Gaethers Fund had how much money?
Um.
It raised.
The Gaethers and Factory Shoals Fund, I believe their revenue was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for the year and then their expenditures were a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
So, so Gaethers should be able to take care of itself without additional, uh, funding from our taxpayers. So how much money do, do, do we typically give to Gaethers to operate?
The general fund does appropriate the Gaethers Fund. Um, I cannot remember right off the top of my head exactly what it is.
Well, my point being is that they should be the fund itself. And the, uh, Solid Waste Authority, is their, is their money, do they take in about enough money to take care of themselves? Because if I remember, uh, a few years ago, that was their main objective, was to take in enough money so that they wouldn't come to the taxpayers every year in order to take money, get money, take money from the taxpayers in order to fund the Solid Waste Authority. So are, are they close to taking care of themselves, if I could ask?
For the Solid Waste Fund, the only transfer in from the general fund is the amount that is tied back to a debt service amount that was paid out for a land settlement.
So, so we're not giving anything from the general fund?
Other than the amount that pays the debt service piece, but as far as their operational costs, the general fund's not.
Yes, ma'am. So how much is the debt service piece?
It's around six hundred and forty-eight thousand a year, I think.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner, uh, Mason, I'm sorry. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we bring up Gaethers quite often. And I wanna know, I mean, there was only one commissioner that sat on this board that actually voted to actually purchase, uh, the Gaethers property. And so I wanna know, at the time that that commissioner actually voted to purchase that property, was it stated, and maybe that's some research that we can do, was it stated at that particular time that that particular property was to pay for itself? That's what I wanna know. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, you have a question?
Because I was on the board at that particular time. Uh, that property purchased by former chairman, in late chairman, Davis Morgan. It was not a vote on it. It was something he purchased. And he purchased it because of the reservoir, the one that hadn't been built, the one that everybody said was, we were so against, even though our, our water was soon being by twenty-thirty, at capacity or close to it. That's the reason why he purchased it, because he had a vision of looking into the future and make sure we maintain water. They didn't want the idea, he didn't want the idea of us having to use wastewater, recycle it and put it back into our drinking water. And if you look at the records, Commissioner, you'll see that S. Jack, she'll pull it up for you. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, actually, that's great. We do wanna pull the records. Do an open records request, uh, to see who actually voted to purchase that particular property. It was this particular board that made a vote to purchase that particular property. And one of the commissioners sitting on this current board actually voted to purchase that particular property. So I want, we're talking about open records request, let's do an open records request. Let's pull the minutes to see when it was purchased. Let's see who voted for it. And was it stated in the minutes that that particular property, at the time that this board voted for it, was it supposed to pay for itself? Or is that something that we're just coming up with today for political purposes? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
I'm gonna try to make this brief. We always wanna say one Newton and come together when it's convenient. We say it when it's convenient, but we constantly throw little jabs at each commissioner that causes the friction. We keep throwing them. If one commissioner say Mary had a little lamb, the other commissioner gonna say, no, the lamb wasn't little. And it keeps happening over and over again, but we wanna say it's particular people. But we gotta look at ourselves to see who starts it. And it keeps going on and on and on, and we gonna never have cohesiveness. Because we keep trying to pick at each other. And I say we, because I'm a part of this group as well. We all, we all supposed to be one Newton. We gonna never have cohesiveness because one person feel like, oh, I'm gonna get a jab at this one. I'm gonna get a jab at this one. And then you have all this friction instead of us working together. That's why it's a problem. And that means all of us, everybody on this board. Now, going to Gaethers, when I got on this board, I was shocked that the county owned a plantation. And when we first talked about it, I remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Cowan, he even gave a suggestion of leasing it to another company so it's out of the county's hands because of the history of the property. I know myself, as a woman of color, I would not want my tax dollars going to a plantation that did cruelty to humans. I'm sorry. I would not. So that is a, a huge issue for me. And they had a lot of residents. There's a petition with thousands of residents and their signatures on it. I saw it. It started before I even came on this board and it's continuing every day with thousands of residents who said they do not want their tax dollars going to a plantation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brittany. Thank you, Nix.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is number twelve. Um, it's being presented by Ms. Brittany White and Mr. Cooper, the E nine one one center requested update for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, citizens. We come before you today to give an update in relationship to the March fifth workshop we had uh, in reference to the E nine one one building project. I know that there were some concerns in reference to, uh, the fiscal responsibilities associated with this project and that's why we're here to present today. It's gonna be really brief, an overview, a summary of why we're here, the funding sources associated with it, an overview of the Public Facilities Authority, a brief timeline, and any questions that we may have. Also, tonight, we do have Madam Mayor as well as Trudy Henry, the E nine one one directive city of Covington here. As I stated, uh, Ms. Henry presented to this board March fifth. And there was an outline of needs associated in terms of, uh, increased workspace as it pertains to the nine one one center. Our summary, and Brittany will talk specifically about the numbers if there are any questions, is simple. You know, during the bond repayment period, the facility will be owned by the county's PFA and leased jointly to the city of Covington and the county. When the bonds are retired, the property will be deeded jointly to the city of Covington and the county. An IGA and lease agreement from the PFA to the city of Covington and the county would be required. Here is a layout of the various options. One is nearly ten thousand square feet, while option two is just under ninety-six hundred square feet. Funding sources, and I'll yield to Brittany at this particular time to speak specifically to it.
So one thing to make clear with the E nine one one fund is they are a special revenue fund, so they operate on their own revenues. So mainly, their main funding sources, a lot of times the revenues that they bring in from like cell phone bills and stuff, you have the E nine one one fee on your bills. So the way that it works here is the city keeps the books for E nine one one, but the county receives the revenue. So when we receive the revenue, we receive it from the state, we turn it over to, um, the E nine one one fund. So in twenty twenty-three, they collected two point four million. Um, so the plan is with that is to set aside, which they already do, they have a ten percent reserve from the fees that are collected. So last year, that, that, um, ten percent was two hundred and forty-four thousand. So that ten percent should cover, um, the debt service payment. They currently already have a little bit of a cushion of a little over seven hundred thousand there. So they'll have a cushion going into the new debt service piece if they have that. Um, and like we said, the Public Facility Authority would offset, would, would issue the bond and that could help us get a lower interest rate. So the new project, um, that they are proposing is four point five million dollars and a thirty-year bond at three point five million. So that would be two hundred and forty-two thousand per year. And like we said last year, the ten percent was two forty-four, so that would be right at. And their revenues do continue to seem to grow yearly, um, so probably in the, in the future, you would have a little bit left over to build up that capital reserve again. Um, the city and county would not have to contribute any additional funds unless there was needs for capital items. And like I said, they do have a little bit of a cushion now, so they would utilize that before they would be asking the city or county for additional money. And right now, the, um, county split, there's an IGA in place, which is around seventy-five to twenty-five percent. That varies on the call volume per year. So the overview for the Public Facility Authority, so the first thing we would do is we would have a special called meeting prior to a board meeting, so we could do it all in conjunction on one night. So you would have a special called meeting for the PFA to allow, um, for us to move forward with taking the bond out and getting with bond counsel and putting it out on market. And then you would also have another meeting at the BOC meeting to also approve the same thing. Um, there would be a resolution approved at both of those meetings to allow the issuance of the bond. And then once bond counsel, um, puts everything out, we would come back to you in the same manner where we would have a special called meeting and then a regular meeting. And then that's when the board would vote to adopt, um, the bond documents. So there, the timeline for that, the recommendation from the board and the Public Facility Authority, um, we will reconvene in the second meeting in April to begin the process as outlined. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Commissioners? Thank you so much. Yep, thank you. Um, Ms. Ham?
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item num, item number thirteen. It's being presented by our sheriff, Mr. Ezell Brown. Discussion regarding Newton County Sheriff's Office Jail Recidivism Rate and Mental Health Resource and Treatment Needs.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. All of you that make up this board, it's good to be here with you tonight. We have, um, first of all, thanks, Mr. Cooper, for showing up on, uh, March thirteenth. Tabletop at District Five, uh, I was unable to stay, but I understand from the federal government that was one of the top of the line. Apparently you had some participation in that. Thank you so much. Uh, tonight, we're here, uh, to talk about the jail recidivism rate and mental health issues and resources, uh, treatments that's needed. Uh, just a few weeks ago, uh, you, you all discussed, uh, funding for, um, those needs for law enforcement. And we're here tonight to talk about that. Our plan, uh, with that is to implement a co-responder unit. Most of our surrounding counties, uh, they have the co-responders. Co-responder is someone who's well-trained, who, uh, go out with the officers in crisis situation. Crisis situation and with them going out would eliminate, um, law enforcement officers being tied up directly in a crisis situation. We have officers who are trained, uh, to deal with that, uh, mental illness and, and all. But however, we do not have a caseworker that can go out and be with the officer, that can drill down and that can talk to those individuals coming down and then be able to, uh, point them in the direction that they need to go in order to receive treatment or whatever, uh, as a follow-up. We're planning on adding additional mental health and substance abuse training to all of the Newton County SO staff. And we plan to continue tracking our mental health and substance abuse crisis with Newton County. We're currently using the ODM map system. And we're looking to possibly devise a more specific law enforcement-driven system that captures the data need for our officers and properly respond to those types of calls. And, and again, there are funds that was allocated to law enforcement that I believe was, if I recall correctly, it was roughly a hundred thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Cooper. He just recently had a board meeting. But just to talk to you about the, the benefits of that program, uh, benefits of bringing someone on. And also to talk about the recidivism there at the jail. On a daily average, on a daily average of four hundred and twenty to, uh, four seventy-five, five hundred inmates there, from fifty-five to sixty percent of those individuals, they're on some form of psychotro, psychotropic medication. So that tells you what we're facing in the community. That tells you that our facility, and not just our facility, but jails throughout the nation today is a mental health institution. We have implemented, again, programs there at the Sheriff's Office. We have reduced our recidivism. Two thousand and eight, when, and, and, and again, I, I wanna make this clear. And, and I'm not bashing anyone. I'm only just giving you facts. Giving you, uh, a vision that I had. In two thousand and eight, when I took office, we was at seventy-eight to eighty percent recidivism at that time. Now, we have reduced it by forty-nine percent. And, and some have said, well, it's due to COVID. Well, it's due to the lack of prosecution. Well, due to jail, jail numbers, capacity. That has nothing to do with recidivism. Nothing at all. That has to do with a person walking into jail, being booked in, being released, and coming back to the jail. That's what we're talking about. And I don't want it to be misconstrued to think that, uh, there's other reasons that the numbers are low. What we have realized, what we have realized in this effort, we are saving taxpayers' dollars. When you think about the cost, and this is not including medical, it, it costs anywhere between fifty-five, sixty-five dollars a day for a single inmate. Well, if you take that and just the ones that we have put back into, to society, when you look at those numbers there, even at fifty-five dollars a day, you're talking about over a million and five that you save each and every year. A million and five. You look at sixty-five dollars a day. And again, no medical cost is added on to this. If they take a aspirin, it's six dollars more. If you take... If they take a aspirin, it's six dollars more, if you take, you know how they add up. It's 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 over a million and a half. So with that said, if we are able to reduce our recidivism down to forty-nine percent, you know as well as I do, part of the remaining there happen to be mentally ill. So if we can hire a person to go into the mun- community with officers, deal with those folks who are having a crisis moment, that person, it would prevent that person from coming to jail. That co-responder and the officer who's well-trained then would take that person to whatever facility that is needed in order for that person to get the help that is needed. Now, some will say, well, how was you able to drop those numbers from seventy-eight to uh forty-nine percent? Well, that through programs, we have twenty-plus programs there at our facility. We give them hope. We give them not only just hope, but we provide, our programs provide free cell phones upon release from our programs. Free rides to back and forth work through Uber. We also look for housing. Whatever a person need, they can get it there at the Office of Sheriff. We also provide the job for them. We have a workforce development program there at the jail. As the young lady said the other day, she's gone through several drug programs. And the best drug program she had or entered was the fact that she was able to stay there seven months, have a clear mind. And then after having a clear mind, being offered the opportunity to take welding while she was incarcerated. After taking welding, then she gets her OSHA certificate, OSHA certified. After being certified, she goes over to one of the local manufacturers, she takes on a job paying a seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour. But guess what? Because she was a changed person, now she's deforming there. She's deforming there. So, this is what we're trying to do. We are trying to change lives in this community and nothing political about this at all. Nothing, I want you to know that. We want to do the good and the will of the people for this community. When you can save a million and five, it's worth looking into. When you can prevent deputies from responding back to the same location five times, ten times because of what? Lack of treatment, it's worth it. And that's what we are here today for. We are here today to tap into the resources that you have so that we can continue building our program. Some may say, well, does the program cost money? No, it doesn't. Every program that we have there at the jail, hold on, let me back up. There is one clinician that we pay a small stipend to come in, but the rest of them are volunteers there at the Office of Sheriff. There are volunteers who come in and volunteer their time, some are clinicians, but they volunteer their time to ensure that our inmates receive the proper training, the proper treatment that they need, so when they return back to the streets, they are not returning back to the jail. All of it so far is grant-funded, all but the position that we're seeking at this point. We are now seeking a connect and protect grant with this on down the line. But we need something, we need a seed now, that's what we need. We need a seed now so that we can hire a co-responder, bring him on, so then we can do the will of the people and that we can continue to be what I think is the beacon across Georgia as it relates to recidivism. That's that's what I want to see.
Finished? Finished?
Yes, sir. I mean, I can go on, but.
So, um, what's what's, I guess, what's the ask? You asking the M. to?
I'm asking for the hundred thousand dollars. That's what I'm asking for. I think it's opera funds. Is, didn't you all appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for opera funds here not long ago?
From where?
Excuse me, Sheriff Brown, are you referring to the consent agenda at the last board meeting with viewpoint where there was ninety-six thousand two hundred and seven dollars?
Yes, sir, I maybe, is that it? That was the M O. U. that we had worked up for the person. But I I had some understanding and maybe I was told wrong, or maybe I received it wrong. And if I am, we still need to look elsewhere. Uh, that's that's all I would say, if we we, if it's if it's misinformation and that stuff gets out. You want to clear it up, Mister Cowan?
Uh, Commissioner Sanders?
I I believe what Sheriff is speaking of, when we had the money allocated for a hundred thousand dollars for mental health and when we had the discussion with um Ms. Shannon, she reiterated, and also Commissioner Mason reiterated, was for law enforcement because it was, I was talking about a nonprofit. And then we also, someone, well, Commissioner Mason stated that it was placed back in all behavioral health. But I don't, I've never seen that vote. I've been asking for that vote, well, we voted to put it back into all of behavioral health. But that hundred thousand dollars was there, I don't know where it went. I stand corrected if the clerk can get that, but I haven't seen a vote where we removed the hundred thousand dollars from the opera allocation. And so I think that's what Sheriff is asking for. But to add on to that, that is a serious issue for those who probably are aware, I'm a part of core with N A. C. O. as well as Behavioral Health Program. And they send us to other counties to learn about behavioral health and how they law enforcement actually has triages. And they have different, they have people that go with the officers on site for mental illness. And so a lot of counties, even Fulton County just recently moved to that, DeKalb County just moved to that actual uh process. A lot of counties are moving to that because our officers are not, I wouldn't say trained, but are not in the area of identifying those who have mental health issues. And other counties have a triage to where they won't even go bring them to the jail, it goes straight to the triage. So we definitely need to incorporate those various things because I know in my subdivision alone, I have three individuals that have mental illness that just walks. But I believe the officers know who they are, but what if somebody is walking the street that they don't even know who they are and thinking that they are retaliating? So we need to have this in place because it's very important, we just passed a resolution to say, mental health is a crisis in Newton County. But we got to put our our money where our mouth is to see how we're going to actually fund it. I can't, I I I'm not the finance person, I don't know what's going on and as well as it's the funding is there. But we need to be able to protect our residents and our officers when dealing with mental health.
Uh, Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Miss Chairman. Sheriff, I I think what you're doing is the one of the most innovative things I've heard in a long time. Except forty-something years ago when L E A. A., you remember them? That was a federal government program uh provided monetary assistance to law enforcement agencies. They had a provision in there for um mental health screening and things like that. Most law enforcement agencies over the years ignored it.
Correct.
And we've been, we focused our attention on punishment and get people off the streets and hire more cops and all this stuff. But I don't think you're there helping any of the body. And I think what you're proposing is exactly what needs to be done in the whole community of law enforcement. And I think Newton County can be a pilot program, can be a great program for this. I don't know if we have any opera funds left, I don't know. But I would suggest that we got the upcoming budget, let's put a position in there for this. Okay.
Let let me say this, uh, we we put a position, we put in for a position in our last budget, but we didn't get it. And and I'm glad you brought that up about forty years ago. Yes, our concept, forty years ago, lock them up and throw away the key.
Yeah.
That was the concept.
Yeah.
After looking at this thing real close and drilling down and and in talking to those individuals that I see come and go to our jail, after four or five decades, you know what I tell them? I locked up your great-granddaddy, I locked up your granddaddy, I locked up your father.
Yep.
I locked up your uncle. When will the cycle be broken? And and that's the only thing that we're trying to do.
It won't be unless you take a step.
That's right.
You got to take that step and.
And we're willing to take that step.
I'm for helping that, uh, whatever we need to do. Tell us how to get the money, either put it in the budget. Let's let's just do it, hire what we need to do.
It's a no-brainer.
I'm not sure it's any, I'm not sure there's any opera funds left.
So, and the truth of the matter is a five-person unit, but we only asking for one person at right now. And we're hoping to seek out grants. I've talked to the congressmen and s- and and so forth, looking out for us for grant funding. I think it's just a matter of time for that, but that's not going to be over, that's not going to be until next year uh when the uh the application will come out. But we need to do something now because we know and we see that it's working.
Right.
Thank, thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call on you, I'm gonna call on you. Thank you, sir, thank you, ma'am. This is something, uh Sheriff, thank you for being here tonight, by the way.
I'm excuse me, let me just say, and you're part of that board.
Yeah, thank you for being here tonight, sir.
And and Miss Birch here is part of the board, so you know well what's going on.
Thank you for being here tonight, sir, I greatly appreciate you being here tonight. Um, this is something that we've been working on for probably about maybe four or five years. We've been trying to get this done, Gwinnett County's doing it, Rockdale County's doing it, it's the district that we are in, the Gwinnett, Rockdale Counties and Newton County. Sheriff, uh and, you know, I noticed that we need to wait till we put it in the budget and 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 that's fine. But um, is there any way that a position that can be reallocated or reclassified that we can um hire somebody immediately? Is that an option?
You know, let let me just say this. No offense to you, but every time there is a need for the Office of Sheriff, okay? No offense. Can you take from somewhere else? I I I'm, that's that's what's said all the time. If you take from, it will take two-plus positions to do that. Now that we have the defined benefit program, people are walking in, phoning in, sending applications in. We have a stack of applications now because of the defined benefit. Thank you so much for that. So with that, it's a draw. So what happens if we use two-plus, five percent of the positions and then we can't have the personnel that's going to be coming in? I mean, that's that's always been the been the factor.
Well, I'm the, I mean, I, you know, I'm the biggest advocate for that, um, you know, dealing with that. I have a lot of that in my family as well. I'm just trying to find a way that we can get it done, uh.
I I understand, but but I understand truthfully, it's it's disappointing that every time, Mister Cooper, every time we come here, if I have five positions, ten positions, you need to do away with two of those positions to get something else. That's that's always the fact. That's always the fact. Others walk up here and get what they want. And I'm just being honest with you.
That's not, I I mean, that's that's not true, the D. A. just came and asked for a position. Uh, but listen, I want to, we need this position, so I'm not going to argue about that. We definitely need this position, we need this position to be, uh, we need someone to go out with our deputies. I I agree with you one hundred and thirty percent with that. How we get there, I guess that's.
And that's a good case in point, how we get there. I think, I think at this point point here, we need to put, as some, as my father would say, we need to put our hands to the plier and figure it out. That's what we need to do. Because if the time come and then we need the deputies, who's going out with the co-responder? So, I I believe there's resources somewhere, Mister Cooper, we can tap into.
So Sheriff Brown, your intent was to add this position into your new budget?
We added it into the budget, the last fiscal budget, we added it in, but it was not funded for whatever reason. That's all I'm saying. And we we back now, now we see the benefit of those things that we're doing. Do we wait until we have peoples, who have individuals who are standing by, wanting to uh take on the responsibility of being a co-responder?
And it's a proven model, we had that model in Henry as well, mental health clinicians that do the drive alone. So, uh, now we just have to figure out how to get there as you stated and the chairman stated. So, i- if if you've added it in your budget for this budget cycle, uh, we will take a look at your budget. Uh, and and um.
The budget cycle is when? When is the budget cycle?
Uh, we're actually starting hearings next week.
But the budget, it's it's July, right?
Correct, sir.
March, April, May, June, July.
It's emergency, it's an emergency me now is what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying. I wouldn't be up here if it wasn't an emergency, five months. So do I tell a clinician, wait five months? That's 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 my position. Or do we put our hands to the plier and come up with that money? That's all I'm saying.
Mister Henderson?
Thank you. Well, first of all, uh Sheriff Brown, you know, I I I like your leadership because you have a vision to take us from the old days to the new days. And I appreciate that that vision. And also I just want to just add on that you are the top elected official in Newton County. None of us, y'all fall under the sheriff. And of all the sheriffs that I knew, and I mentioned that I have the old man on the board, but know every sheriff that we had, since I've been on the board, if he came up here and asked for thirty cars, forty cars, fifty cars, we all hand went straight up, how we get it to give it to him. And it was the whole board, it was, it was unanimous. So the question I want to ask uh Ms. Brittany, if we could, I guess, unless there's no reason, do we have the hundred thousand dollars off the funding money that could be used uh for this particular person?
Um, the the best that I can recall, and I will double-check when I get to my um office tomorrow, is that we did still have the hundred thousand dollars allocated to mental health.
Okay, so 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 I guess the question is, to my fellow board members, is why don't we allocate that money to the sheriff as far as what we need? He knows what we need for his law enforcement. I'm a parent of a of a young man who has mental illness. And he would, he would do all kind of stuff. We would have to hold him down on my porch, he would run down the street, would run down the street and jump in front of cars just, I mean, and Sheriff Brown knew what I'm talking about. And so there's a need, I know there's a need, and I'm not the only parent that has a child with mental illness. It's something we need to address not tomorrow, but right now. And uh, y'all just just stop kicking the can. Just do something. Let's stop giving, let's move in front of the curve instead of staying behind the curve. And I'm just to this in my closing, when Sheriff Brown first got here, I was here, yep, I was here. Sheriff Brown, I think the first meeting with the Board of Commissioners, I never forget it as long as I live, and Sheriff Brown says two hundred and Sheriff Brown says, two hundred thousand dollars that we need to cut the budget, 'cause we need it, 'cause these are hard times right now. But we'll give it back to you. He never got it back. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, I'm curious, Brittany, wh- where it is? You said it's there, and I think in our last meeting when we, are you talking about ARPA funds? So when we looked at the ARPA spreadsheet at the last meeting, that line item was blank. So there was nothing in that line item that we discussed, and I'm not sure if you were actually here or not, when we had Attorney Shannon come, and Attorney Shannon basically stated to us that the only monies that we had for mental health was to Viewpoint Health, which we gave them four hundred thousand dollars. So when you go back and look at that spreadsheet from last year, that particular line item is blank. So this board never voted on that particular line item having any funding in it. So I'm curious to know how our spreadsheet update says it's blank, but for some reason you're saying that it isn't.
Um, I guess I need to get an updated spreadsheet then from Kennedy.
Yes.
But the last, I do remember y'all taking the money and then whatever was remaining split it, splitting it between transportation and the Water Authority. Um, but I was not aware that that piece, I guess, rolled into that.
That's correct, so there was a spreadsheet, the last spreadsheet that she sent to us last year, that spreadsheet showed that that line item was blank. And I think what she told us is that we had actually taken that money from that particular line item. I don't remember exactly what she said we utilized it for. Now, I think we, that was a line item that was, that we wanted to actually fund. I think when we initially started the process, we decided what line items we wanted or what things we wanted to fund. Um, and when you look at that last spreadsheet, it's blank, it was like two or three different items on there that's pre-, and I can't pull it up on my phone right now, but that were blank. So I would recommend that you get an update from Attorney Shannon because I don't want it to be stated that we have those funds and we really don't. Let's be sure. Now, if we do have those funds, yes, let's utilize them. But if we don't have them, I don't want it to be said that we have them and we really don't. Now, if we don't have them in that particular line item or, or budget, I would recommend that we figure out another way to make that happen. I'm with Sheriff, I think this is a great program. Uh, I think it is something that should be in the jail. I remember the very first time when Sheriff Brown invited me to the jail and gave me a tour back in two thousand and nineteen, I saw the mental ward. And so I know that it's a need and I know that it's there. Um, and we do need to find the funding for it, it may not be ARPA funds. If it is ARPA funds, let's utilize it for that. If it isn't, we can find a way to actually make that happen. Uh, as a matter of fact, I, I recently had a previous conversation, um, with the sheriff, he can attest to that, um, that I have personally started a mental health initiative. And so I'm willing to work with the sheriff's office, uh, and any other partner within the community to help address this concern because it's an issue. Um, we're currently looking, uh, identifying our stakeholders right now. I told Sheriff that I wanted the sheriff's office to be a part of that stakeholder in that initiative to address that concern. And so however we need to do that, I support that and I wanna help that. But I wanna make sure that we're not saying that we have ARPA funds when we don't. But if we do, let's clarify that because the last update spreadsheet says that we don't. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I got Mr. Cooper, you and Commissioner Sanders. Go ahead, Ms. Cooper.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll a- I'd like to ask that, one, we go back and look at our funding sources and see if there are ARPA funding? Two, figure out if there are not any ARPA funding, that we figure out some type of budget surplus and we come back April se- second with that information.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Let's just simplify this and we'll come back to the next board meeting, um, with a solution, one way, whether it's ARPA or general fund.
Cool. But I trust your numbers.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate you, thank you much. I'm sorry, no, no. Yes, that, that's it.
Mr. Chair, we're at number fourteen at this time, citizen comments. It is reflected, three minutes per citizen, we just ask that you introduce yourself and your contact address or information. Again, citizen comments, three minutes per citizen, please.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we're gonna allow citizens to come up and have comments, you may come at this time, please, three minutes. Um, it's a time limit, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Dave Norton, and I got fat thumbs. Uh, four, three, five, seven, Highway one forty-two in Newborn. Uh, hats off and kudos to the citizens of District Three. You spoke with passion and compassion for your neighbors tonight. Your arguments sounded the same as those that us on the east side of Newton have been speaking against, uh, for the past few months. Our schools, roads, infrastructure, first responders, all must be prepared and ready for this growth ahead of time. We must be proactive, not reactive. What affects one affects us all. Uh, there is a little symbol up there by the, on the, one of the boards earlier, uh, thing called One Newton. Well, you saw One Newton tonight, when you seen District Two speak the same as the people from District One and District Five. That's One Newton. And I seen a little bit of One Newton on the other side of the podium over here, and I'd like to see that continue. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, anyone else?
Good afternoon, everybody, this is my first time being up here speaking. But I wanna comment on what J.C. and Miss Sanders said. We had a cookout out there at Sarah's, but it's Nelsa Height children. They was up there at the field. And we had a nice time, but there was no place for the little kids to go and play. But the big kid can go out on the field and play ball. The little, bitter little kids can't play no ball. They wanted to go up there and get on the swing set, but they couldn't get up there because it's locked up. Why is it locked up? You got all the rest of these here community building, everything open. Why do you have to close that one down? It's not fair. That's not fair for Nelsa Height or anybody else, but you wanna bring somebody else in that's not commi- not with that community, that run that community. I live in that community, I've been in that community for sixty-five years. And we never had this problem. All of a sudden, we got the problem now? Why? I would like to know. You got a, a day coming up that would you go open up? It should be open now. The gate be open all night long. As, uh, y'all hit man up here say that he had a film, what they going in there at night drinking and going on? Lock the gate up. You got a certain time for it to be open, you got a certain time for it to be closed. You got all the rest of them like that, why you can't have it like that? Nelsa Height is just as good as any of the rest of them. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Ms. Cabion, I live here in Covington. And I just wanted to say that I am really appreciate the home repair program that you had. But I do have some concerns. Um, when a contractor come out and do the work, then maybe it'll follow an inspector. Now, most of us on the program, we're seniors. So therefore, I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for those that can't speak up or don't know what is, uh, available for them, their rights. But when a contractor come out and they have materials, they have bought materials up under the money that he got to allocate for us to do the job through the program, he should have a warranty on things that he has bought. And my concern is my roof. Now, my roof might not leak another year or two, it might leak next week. But there's no warranty on the material, and you get a warranty with materials every time you buy them from Home Depot or wherever you buy them from. So why we can't have that warranty? Because he gonna do the work and he's gonna be gone, we'll never see him again. But yet and still, who do we call when our roof go to leaking? And there's nobody to help, the program is closed down, nobody's available. Now, we stuck with another way that we have to pay to have it redone. So I would like to know, who can I speak to, to put this in place that we would be able to have resources to, to get in touch with someone in case the workmanship that the program that already vetted these contractors, that I would be able to get some kind of resource to get it done? Because it doesn't make sense, and it's not right, because seniors don't know all the ru- rules to, well, this need to be done like this, this need to be done like that, and we get contractors to come in and throw the stuff up. Now, when it's time for it to get repaired, who do the, who do, who do we come to? So a resource is something that we need because I've been trying to get resources to who I need to speak to concerning my roof, because the work that was done, it was good workmanship on most of it. But on my roof, it's not right. So I tried to get the contractor to come back out. He got his money, he gone, he ain't got time, he's not gonna do it, he not gonna come. So now who do I go to? So I, I go to the program and speak to someone there, and nobody can help me.
Thank you, thank you so much, ma'am.
So, I mean, is there a solution or is there something that we can do?
So you can talk, so you can talk to the county manager after, um, the board meeting. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you so much, anyone else?
Agreed again, commissioners. My name is Tercia Hodge, and I am a resident of Newton County. I'm actually the Board Secretary of Silver Ridge Farms. I'm here because I'm concerned about all the new bills, buildings that are on the horizon and will approve prior to Commissioner Sanders' time, and we need recreation. So with that said, I'm gonna inquire about the four million dollar HUD award that was utilized, what should be utilized in District Three. We desperately need it, and I wanna know when and where you guys gonna make progress on this award? Cause during the BLC meeting in February twentieth, your consultants stated that HUD needs a response and the clock is ticking. I know how this works. My career is in grants management for the last twenty years. There's a period of performance for every federal award. And if that award is not utilized, it gets reallocated elsewhere. And I'm asking you guys, when are you guys gonna make movement on this award? Because if it's, if we, you know, lose it, then it will be on our backs, the taxpayers, so. I'm asking you guys to please make movement on their award, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Sandra Bates. Um, I have a question. I'm wondering, and when the young, um, lady just started speaking about building, do we have certified building inspectors? Can anybody answer that? Are building inspectors certified to go out and to look at things that's going up? Because there are a lot of problems when it comes to the building here, and I know most cert- most building inspectors should be certified. Also, with your twenty twenty-four budget, did you have increased staffing needs for police, for, um, the services? That say parks and recreation, was staff included in that budget? For public works, um, and streetlights? We don't have streetlights out here. And with, with as many people that's moving out here, that's an issue because it's so many accidents, especially just going around Herald Docks, the curb, I've seen cars flipped over all the time. So I'm really need to know about the certified building inspectors, because I had one come out and he, he was not certified. And I do not know anybody that been in planning and sustainability as long as I have, that they have off, off building inspectors going out inspecting these properties, especially with these new builds, and they're not certified. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Stella Manali, and I just came out tonight to say, thank y'all for the home improvement. Everything that we asked for, we got it. And I know it took a little time, but I understand, good things come to those who wait. So, we are pleased with everything that y'all did for us. So I just wanna come out and thank this entire board, you know, for giving the extra money and everything. So I just wanna say thank you to all y'all tonight. And y'all be safe and be blessed going home tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Everybody's concerned about the people names up here. So I'm gonna tell you my name, you can call me Paul Revere Jackson, and I'm under threat nation news, Paul Revere. So, if you need a name, you can use that one. And first of all, kudos is a bunch of BS, you guys don't deserve no kudo. Mr. Edward, Mr. Mason, Mr. Corr, you don't deserve no kudos, you know why? That's what you're supposed to do, is support people in District Three. You don't deserve that. That's just like a net lifting up the Empire State Building. You ain't never heard of that happening. Okay, well, never mind, that's another story. Then we wanna talk about the ARPA fund money. The sheriff just asked for a hundred thousand dollars, you guys claim you broke. But Piedmont came up here and asked for a million bucks. You didn't have a problem with that. That's why I keep telling the people here in Newton County, the mouth is not adding up. It's something shady about that money. Some people getting it, some people not getting it. It's kinda fuzzy. So, that goes to tell you, why can't the sheriff get what he need, but a private hospital can get what they need? You got some people in Newton County can't even go over to the hospital. But you could quickly can lock them up and put them in jail for frivolous stuff. So, th- th- that's, that's BS. So, you guys need to get together. Newton County, this, this voting time. It's time for you to get some correction up here. Cause these people is not supporting people in Newton County. You got people's streets not being paid, people roof are leaking, there's no accountability. Mr. El- Mr. Mason, Mr. Corr, they are not accountable to you unless you spreading some money, charity under the table. We gonna call them out. We gonna call them out every time. Paul Revere is in your neighborhood. Get out your houses, come to these meetings and hold these guys accountable. Cause as long as you don't, these foxes, they enjoying these chicken dinners on your behalf. Okay? So if you don't wanna get out and tell these people they not doing right by your community, they gonna continue to do that. As a citizen, a taxpayer, you deserve to be heard and you deserve to be listened to. These guys up here do not care about what we say. See those monitors, I've been telling you about these monitors for the longest. They ain't listen to me, you think they gonna listen to you? Well, bring them some gifts. Bring them some presents. Hide a little stash somewhere. I'm quite sure you can get your agenda on the table to be heard in Newton County.
My concern tonight is about District Three and I'm gonna say be quick as I can. We understand that the reason District Three is not getting anything. Chairman Bang, you said you would veto everything concerning District Three. Commissioners, Edward, you said that if anybody ruled you the same, a wrong way, you would bring the redneck out. So I guess Commissioner Sanders probably ran redneck out. Commissioner Mason said that he would never sit in a meeting with you. But the reason he's mad with you is you had a man on your Facebook and that man said Commissioner Mason was gay. And he got mad with you cause that man said that. You didn't say that, the man said he was gay because he was gay.
You want a recess?
The other thing is the night politician is going on, politician is going on, I'm through, politician is going on and the reason, 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 okay? All right, okay. The truth come out.
Commission, 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 commission. God, listen, I seek a motion that we adjourn, please. Is that fact? Is that, is that, we adjourn? Anyone else wanna make comments? Yeah, come on.
And I know that place off Almond Road up there. Couple of my friends went up there and rented the building, they paid, I believe it was two hundred dollars piece to rent that building. And didn't get no receipts or none of that. So I wanna know what the difference between that building, the one in Nelson Heights? And the one in Mansfield, so what's the difference? Can somebody tell me that? I know he paid them, two people paid them two hundred bucks a piece. Didn't get no receipts, cause I was there eating myself. So what's the difference between Nelson Heights and the one in Mansfield?
Y'all have a good one. Anyone else?
Denise Williams, Newton County resident. I have a couple of issues and concerns and comments as well. Commissioner Mason, you was the one who was very vocal on the in-house attorney. You know, y'all was gonna try to move in the direction of an in-house attorney. But as this whole board, the in-house attorney, most of the time, the votes up here is three to two. So, the citizens of Newton County, we got to see something different because we have the former county attorney that sued the county. And we still, in 2024, is using Gerard and Davis to represent this county with our tax dollars. So, you have to make it make sense. And I'm not just saying you, I'm saying the whole entire board. And another thing, that four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Commissioner Sanders would have never knew about that four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. You told her about it. So, you told her about it, excuse me, I have the floor. Respectfully. If you would have never told her about the four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, she would have never knew. She would have never knew. But then every time that she come up here and try to put a motion on the floor just to discuss, it's not gonna be a vote, it's just a discussion of how to move forward for her district where her constituents want. It's a problem. Mr. Cowan, the same for you. You have, and let me put this out here so you'll know. I don't know Suzette Ma, never met her, but people in Parks and Rec talk. You was working diligently with Suzette Ma to get drawings and all these different things to show what can go over there and what can be built over there. But you didn't include Commissioner Sanders. She was never part of the conversation or the discussion. And another thing, I have never seen Commissioner Sanders or Commissioner Henderson go in nobody else's district and do business without including that commissioner. So we have to be mindful up here. Because when you stand before God and be judged for whatever matters that you have in your heart, you gonna stand before God by yourself, your entourage is not gonna be there with you. So y'all be mindful, this is what the constituents want in that district. Stan Edwards, we've been trying to have a meeting with you ever since last year, we can't even get you. We reach out to you on social media, you don't even respond, I'm out of town, I'm out of town. But you take care of the east side of your district, but you don't care about the west. We, I just told you, we've been trying to have meetings with you. Yeah. So that's how I know.
My name is Joseph Reed, Newton residence. And, you know, I was, my word, I was thinking about back there was petty, you know? And, you know, stop being petty and get down to the business of what we need to be doing. You know, and I grew up in Nelson Heights, you know, as a kid, you know, I hate to see what's happening. And then, you know, my family owned a lot of the property that y'all talking about over the years, you know what I mean? So I seen the whole thing happen, you know, with that property, you know what I mean? And when I go that way, you know, I'm disgusted, you know? And, you know, so it's like, and when we get up here and we make decisions and y'all make decisions, you know, and y'all make decisions, you know, because y'all got an issue with somebody or whatever and y'all don't make the issue for the right reasons, you know, you know, you hurt other people. You know what I mean, it's not just hurting you, it's hurting a lot of people in this community, man. It's just not hurting you when you make these decisions, you know what I mean? So, you know, it's like getting outside ourselves and making decisions, you know, based to help kids, you know what I mean? It ain't about, you know, what we want all the time, what about the kids, man? What about what other people need in the neighborhood? You know, we got all kinds of drugs killing people around here. But we're not even talking about that. We got all, you know, I'd heard fifty different type of drug that's killing people around here. But we are not discussing none of that because we got beefs up here and we don't wanna get down to the business of what we need to get down to. If we get down to the business and we do right, we won't have these problems we got. You know, thank you.
Stephanie Linty, Newton County resident. I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed. And I'm saddened because we have allowed a hijacking of our board meetings and of our community. People that get up here and preach propaganda and lies that they know are lies. And I'm going to say, I agree with Commissioner Sanders. Do open records. Learn the truth about what's going on. Because it is clear that it's political election season. There's a lot of grandstanding going on. There are a lot of truths that are being hidden. And I'm gonna say for the record, and I don't care what the backlash is gonna be on social media. The bottom line is, we're in a situation where we have a community that is being duped, that's being lied to. And we gotta stop this. We need to work together. Because in the process of us not working together, we're looking like fools in Newton County. And I have been here for a long time. And I have committed to make this community better. That's not a political statement, that's the truth. But what I've seen is so sad. It is petty. And I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Sanders again. Cause she said, she's included in it and she's right. She is. To get respect, you have to give respect. I think we've always been taught that when we were young. But we forgot about it when we became officials. We gotta do better, y'all, cause this is absolutely ridiculous. And District Three, please ask questions. Because I'm in District Three, I've been in District Three since nineteen ninety-eight and I've been fighting for District Three and Newton County since then. And we're not asking the right questions, we're not. We're getting fed these lies, cause I ain't got no other way to say it, it's a lie. And we're not asking questions. There was a measure tonight that was passed and everybody that came here fighting for District Three needs to ask what happens next? Because you're gonna be surprised when you find out what happens next. You're gonna be surprised and you're gonna be disappointed, you're gonna wanna know why your leaders didn't tell you the truth. Bring all the backlash, I'm ready for it.
Anyone else?
My name is Carla Daniels Hooper, resident of District Three since two thousand and one. I agree with what Stephanie said. But I also wanna add that it's time for us to stop supporting people and personalities and support issues. All of my neighbors, friends that are in this room, we're concerned about our children, our communities, our livelihood. Everyone in here is guilty of having personal issues with one another. We have to set that aside and think about why you accept this calling? Because we all agree that none of us in public service get paid enough for the stress and the amount of time we have to stay on our knees. And all of us now have to go home and process what just happened tonight. So in order to avoid this continuing, let's get back to why we accepted the calling in the first place. I've said before, there needs to be some reconciliation, but it has to start with yourself first and your own conviction. And I'm asking my commissioner, and I've said these things to you in private as well. Let us work on the plan. Forget the personalities, forget the issues, forget the past. And all the snide comments that we do see and hear from the audience, it has to stop, it's not professional. There are reasons why District Three is not getting the three out of the five votes. We have to bring reconciliation and put aside your hurt, your personal agendas. And if you truly accept this calling, because we all say we're Christian, because God said this is what we were supposed to do, get back to the original reason. That's my petition and that is my ask.
Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna speak from my heart tonight because of the display that just occurred. We talked about, or we often talk about, One Newton. One Newton is a goal. One Newton isn't that we have actually arrived there already. We are striving towards One Newton. And we talk about wanting to work with each other on this board collectively. I have seen social media defamation. I have seen defamation here around this horseshoe. And so, we can't say that we wanna be a team when it is convenient for us. We have to say that we're gonna be a team all the time, in every single situation, in every single scenario. I love the fact that when we vote, we're voting on the issues, we're voting on the subject matters. And so that is the actual objective. And so if we can steer away from the defamation on social media, we can come here and say, yay, yay, let's be a team and let's hurrah. But then we leave this space and we go to social media and defame the ones that we say we wanna work with and we want them to work with us. It doesn't work that way. It was stated by one of our residents that you get respect when you give it. And I think we've gotta keep that in mind to give it so that you can receive it. I also wanted to address something that Commissioner Henderson stated. And I know this has been misconstrued for a while and I think it's time for me to truly address this concern. For one, I never stated that anybody that sat on the board of Nelson Heights was actually being paid. What I did was, in that meeting with Anthony Henderson, I asked a question. Anthony Henderson said, no, no one is getting paid on that board. I said, okay, and moved to the next question. So it has been misconstrued that I said that someone was getting paid on that board. And so I wanna take this public opportunity to apologize to Ms. Thelma. If that is how it was taken, I apologize for that. That was never my intentions. I never intended to say that if that's how it came across. So I wanna make a public apology to her so that that can be cleared. I never stated that anybody was that I asked the question. The next thing I wanna address is that it has been stated several times that I'm here to line my pockets. For one, I'm not getting any monies outside of the salary that has been provided to me that all of the commissioners are actually getting. As a matter of fact, I worked in corporate America. I worked for the Coca-Cola Company in project management for twenty years. I've always wanted to go into entrepreneurship. I was blessed and fortunate enough to transition out of corporate and go into entrepreneurship back in two thousand and twenty. For those who don't know, I don't get up and just tell all of my business all the time, but I run three businesses. As a matter of fact, my wife works a full-time job and also has a business. And so, the money that I generate for me and my family is from the hard work and the dedication that I put in for my three businesses, my wife's job and my wife's business. And so we don't have to take under the table deals to be able to live and to maintain because God has blessed us to be able to be entrepreneurs and to work for individuals that pay us for the work that we give. And then lastly, I do wanna say this, Mr. Chair, I do wanna say this. The four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, we gotta move on.
Okay, I'll address it.
I'll let you address it.
Thank you. The four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars? Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Sanders?
Let the words of my mouth and meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight. Oh Lord, my strength and my Redeemer. To address the social media comment. Newton County is used to doing things quietly. When I came into office, I even had a director, the former Director of Development Services say, Commissioner, you finally got people awoken in Newton County that they're paying attention to politics. Actually, Ms. Daniels, who approached me and said, I voted for you. And you got me interested into politics. And I'm finally paying attention. And you even told me some other things, you and I used to sit together and talk about various things. And so to hear some of the things tonight is very shocking because some of the things you've told me. But I'm here to say is that your residents have a voice. So I get blamed for every person- So I get blamed for every person that speaks out in the community because I'm vocal. I was raised not to sit back and allow anyone to do anything to you and that you have a voice and you shall use it. And you should speak for truth. I think the issue in here is people don't like to hear the truth and don't like to be held accountable. And so when accountability comes to play, we want to say it's propaganda, we want to say it's lies. But everybody knows that when I get information, they call me the receipt keeper. I'll pull out a receipt in a minute and I'll pull out an open records in a minute and speak on it. It is election time. People gonna say various things, they gonna say certain things to make themselves look good. That's what it's supposed to do. You, you're marketing and branding yourselves so people can get your vote. But one thing about myself is I am going to pull out an open records every time. I even teach my constituents, my neighbors, on how to do open records and where to get them from. And when they ask me for that information, I can pull out every document to everything that I've said and verified and show you. Moving on, I would like to, to showcase the, it's about fifteen individuals here in Newton County. Actually eighteen, I got a chance to speak to them. They have never been acknowledged. They are the eighteen trailblazers in Newton County to integrate Newton County schools. And I was talking to them on yesterday, and they were just telling me, we have never been acknowledged being those trailblazers. So bored, I would love to chat, well, now, ask us, it's eighteen names, and I can't call them all out now, but I have those names. These are individuals that integrated Newton High for Qua, which was the elementary school from freshmen to seniors. And they were the first African-Americans to integrate Newton schools here in Newton County. So it's really important that we actually look at that and, and acknowledge those individuals. This weekend, we had the locker room athlete event for men. I was asked years ago to put on an event for men, and I felt like I shouldn't have to because I'm the only female. But I went with that. And I worked with, um, um, it was about eight NFL veteran players and some actually Super Bowl winners. And they had a time of their life, the young men this weekend. It was about seventy men, young men in Newton County, had the opportunity to be mentored by nine, yeah, nine NFL players. So that was amazing. I also want to thank the award that I received. I received one of the top twenty-five Trailblazer Awards here in Newton County. And I just received the message that I also received a President Joe Biden Presidential Lifetime Achieving Award for my work in volunteerism. So I'm thankful for that and many blessings to you all.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. C. What I have, what I have to say is, I guess it's brief, maybe not so brief, but briefly, is there's winners and there's losers. The winners are, see the coverton, when they, um, used to be a, a barn they had, and remember the barn? And had colored on one side and white on the other side. And I was a young man who trying to find a job. My mama had told me, said, you be get a job, boy, cause you gonna get out of this house, you gonna go to work. And I got a job there. And one day I got back from the job and one of my bosses, who was over me, and I had to use the restroom, so another guy in the restroom in the colored side, so I had to go to the white side to use the restroom. And he told me, so you had to get out of here, boy, woo wee. Man, he struck a match. Man, I think I cussed all the way from the, uh, from the, uh, from, from the barn all up to Sam Walton's office to tell them where that happened. And I thought, really thought I would get fired, cause I, I cussed crazy. I was cussing crazy. But I didn't get fired. I made a change. And the change was that, hey, he might have said white on the other side and colored, but you could use every restroom then on, you could use them all, want to. And that's what we got to do here. And why do people come up all the time and when they running for office, start telling lies? Cause I remember about four months ago, uh, I was the worst thing ever happened. Said it was fifteen thousand dollars that I said, and Stephanie, you told me fifteen thousand dollars that we had spent, and you could spend more money, and you know that was over twelve years. You knew that. Then, then what you did was, you took pictures of the stove and played, we, we took the county's money and paid for it. Well, guess what? We didn't, the stove is on my porch now, I had to find somebody to give it to you. Then you talked about my, my grandson. My grandson said we had took money out that budget and paid for it. That was a lie. So now certainly you up, you hiding more, holding mold in there. Come up here and tell us all this stuff, you won a few months ago. And I'm gonna say this. And the what, the what, the losers are Nelson Heights Community Center. Those children don't have nowhere to go. You helped make it that way, emailing up into the commissioners, telling them what to say, helped make it that way, but yet you won't, you won't try to solve the problem. Talk big, but you won't do nothing. And that's the problem that we have in this community. I've been my whole life, I love each and every person in this community. I was raised here, educated here, and when I die, I'm gonna be buried here, oh, Mount Zion Cemetery, in the colored section with my grandmother, my grandfather. I'll be there. So stop lying on us and saying all this, cause it's election time. But I'm gonna say this, and I'm, I'm gonna close, Ms. C. All them promises they make, the new road and stuff they gonna do, get it before the election end, before the election is called, before election day, cause you might not get them. Ain't nothing but a pack of lies. That's one-on-one from Commissioner Henderson. Thank you.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Interesting meeting tonight. Uh, just to clear up a few things that were said that were wrong. Uh, Ms. Williams, uh, any comments I, or any calls I had with Suzette Monk is cause she called me. And she brought me drawings of a football field over in Carroll County. That's the only thing I've ever seen. Uh, which was totally inapplicable for the, uh, pro- the Monk property. The problem I had with the Monk property is that we had already made a, an appraisal and an offer to her, and she rejected it. So as far as I was concerned, that deal was done. We still got to find property for a West Side Community Center. Uh, we've been looking. I have actually got with the chairman on several pieces of property that I knew was available and to see if they would work out. None of them have really worked out yet until, once we find something that will work out, we'll give that to Commissioner Sanders. She's not, she's not an engineer, she's not a lawyer, and she's not, uh, familiar with a lot of things on dealing with property. I'm using my expertise freely to help to do that. Now, as to the gentleman that comes up here and accuses us of taking money, let me tell you something, that makes me pretty mad. And I would tell you, go right over there to the sheriff and fill out a complaint on me. Cause the next complaint's gonna be a false report of a crime. And I'm gonna make sure you go to jail with me. So don't be throwing allegations out there that you can't back up, and they ain't nothing. Doesn't matter about free speech. You can't accuse somebody, you cannot defame a person by accusing them of a crime.
Don't go home.
Not, no, you can't.
I want you to hang around for a minute.
So, anyway.
You can go if you want to.
I'm tired of hearing that. And as to, um, the, um,
Let me tell you something.
Board of Commissioners here. I am, um, I think we've had a good board of commissioners. Y'all think that, uh, uh, there's been fighting and everything? Eh, it's part of it. I don't see it being a problem. But I would suggest that, uh, down the road, the board gets to working together.
I'm not a fan.
That's all I got.
Take your hat off and say it. You done? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So, um, tonight has been a, some kind of night, I tell you. A lot of information been given out, um, to the citizens that came in here expecting one thing and, and receiving false information, receiving, giving hope. Man, we gotta make sure, and our county attorney, and I'm gonna put you out there. You gotta make sure that we, as a board, put out factual information, especially when we know it's not factual. The people I feel sorry for tonight, if Leafstone, they left out of here tonight in hopes that something is gonna be done in their subdivision, that a certain person is gonna get probably evicted out of their subdivision because of something that this board said. Well, Stone Leaf, whatever, it was Stone Leaf, what, yeah, Stone Leaf. So my heart goes out to them because they didn't get the information correctly. Am, am, am I lying? She said I'm lying, she said I'm lying, am I lying? No, 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 she said I'm lying, so I got three, I got two minutes and forty-two seconds. She said that I'm lying, so am I lying? No, no, she said I'm lying, so am I lying? No, 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 she know I'm not lying. So we gonna see on April, we gonna see the second, the second meeting in April, or the first meeting in April, um, the correct information. Because we gotta make sure, we gotta make sure we put factual information out here. I don't care nothing about it being an election season. These people deserve the truth. They deserve the truth. Not going home and, and, and we done, man, it is crazy, man. I, look, listen, I seek a motion that we go home, there, cause the ci- cause the citizens of, of Leafstone will be back. Stone Leaf, Leafstone, they'll be back. Cause they gonna wanna know the truth. And we not gonna sit back here and not tell them the truth. So I seek a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second? Been motioned by Commissioner, and second by Commissioner Cowan, all in favor. Stand adjourned.